All right, should we go ahead and get started? So at least on our half of the table, I want to welcome our friends from the school board. We're delighted to spend some time with you all. I know you guys, some of you at least, were at the tree lighting or the streetlight lighting, which Letty was grand marshal at, so that was a great event. But thank you all for coming together. Before we get started, I did bake some cookies this morning, and I wanted to make sure that we can pass them around to you while I have an opportunity to have some of those. But I'm excited to spend some time together. I think it's really been extraordinarily productive time for the school board and the city council together these past years. And I think a lot of great things have been either accomplished or set in motion. And so I think it's a really unique time in the city's history to have improvements done at TJ, major improvements in Mount Daniel, this fantastic new high school underway and on time and on budget, economic development next door, going planning-wise and great guns, and all the while getting a AAA bond rating for first time last year and the second time this year. So I think we've done some really exciting things together, and so I'm just really happy that we're here. And I know two of you all are leaving, and I just wanted to thank you all, at least on behalf of myself and I imagine on behalf of my colleagues, for the great work you all have done and even zealous advocates for our city schools and education and our kids. And you all have done a great job, so, anyway. I know Mary Beth has a few words she wants to say before she gets started. She did have a root canal this morning. She did, I'm serious. And so she asked if we could keep our meeting to 15 minutes tonight. So probably a few minutes later, but we'll try. All right, so, anyway, Mary Beth?
Thanks, everybody, for being here. At the Budget and Finance Committee meeting last week, we were talking about all the ways that the schools and city have worked together, and I got this great list of some of the things. And then I also have the updated zipper. So this time last year, when we met, we had a zipper of all the things that had to work together so that our high school project and our commercial development, piece by piece by piece, would come together. So this is an update, and if you look at this part, underneath this wavy line is what we had done up through a year ago. And then this wavy line is what we've done in the past year, and then above that line is what we have to look forward to. So it seems like any day now, we're going to be able to do that ribbon cutting and zipper self cutting further. But these are some of the things that both staff and city council and school have worked together on. And there are often questions about how does school staff and general government staff work together, and there's some really good answers here. So I just want to read these 11 things. One is that we navigated a successful budget process last year using the spirit of a revenue-sharing agreement. We broke ground on the new high school. We completed negotiations of the comprehensive agreement for West Falls Church. We're on the verge of considering and approving the SESP for the economic development project. We jointly successfully worked with our neighbors to strengthen relationships with Fairfax County, Virginia Tech, and Womata. We jointly negotiated a new EAP provider that's working with both general government and school staff, and that's an employee assistance program provider. Transitioned to a new pension actuarial services vendor for data and plan verification and 2019 evaluation. There's a life insurance contract, RFP, and contract award out there, and we're working on long-term disability and short-term disability together. The city staff and school staff submitted a grant application to Dominion for an electric school bus, which is really exciting. We reactivated implementation of new MUNIS for employee self-serve and hiring applicant tracking, and we worked through some timing and complexities of the FCC TV station design at the New George Mason High School. So those are all sorts of things that happen in public and behind the scenes and really show a strong commitment to working together. So I just want to thank everyone for all that work.
All right, who are we turning it over to next? Is it Ms. Gill or Mr. Noonan, Dr. Noonan?
Well, thank you so much for having us tonight. It has been a really great year, and I don't think I can even add to what Mary Beth has said and done because she really has captured all of the many projects that we've worked on as a team. And I think it's been a great, we've worked together in a really great spirit of collaboration all year long. And though I'm sadly leaving the board, I'm hoping that that spirit continues on for the next many, many years in perpetuity, as we said at the Budget and Finance meeting. But I will turn it over to Dr. Noonan. Are we going to get into the presentation part yet, or are we going? Okay, we'll do the audit first? Okay. Okay, great. Well, thanks again for having us here tonight.
So Mr. Shields, so we have our auditors here with us this evening?
We do. Mayor Tucker and members of the city council and school board. Tonight is about planning and about looking ahead to the future, but as we kicked off this meeting, we also celebrated achievements in the past year, and we'll also celebrate the audits. We're very pleased to be joined by Megan Argonbright with Brown and Edwards. Ms. Argonbright and the really professional staff of Brown and Edwards do our audit each year. It covers the school board as well as the general government, and so it is, I think, helpful for everybody to meet the auditors, and by law, the city council has to receive this formal presentation each year. We've got about just orientation for a couple of minutes on the audit and then questions.
Thank you. I'm Megan. Nice to meet you all. I've seen several of your faces here. Last year at presentations, it was one time a year that I come and talk to all you guys. So I won't take up too much time, but I will start by saying thank you. The city and the schools do a tremendous job of preparing for the audit. It's really something that comes on top of their other responsibilities, their day-to-day jobs, and that we swoop in to do an audit and kind of throw everything off kilter for a little bit. We send them a thousand emails and ask a thousand questions, they answer all of them. You know, we have several deliverables that we do. There's, you know, the big CAFER, and that's the financial report. That's the important one. And I will say that we issued a clean, unmodified opinion, so extremely important to have. We also do a compliance audit, and we had a clean opinion on that as well. As part of your federal awards this year, we tested highway planning and did not have any findings, which is always nice to hear. We also perform state compliance finding with the APA specs as well, and that's also in the back of your CAFER. A couple of things to say, if you're only, it's a lot of papers, right? It's a lot of pages, and the first couple of pages of this, and there's a reason it's at the front, there's a letter of transmittal, and there's also a management's discussion and analysis. And both of these are written by the city, right? So they're not written, we read them as auditors, we read them. They're written by the city, and essentially it talks about, and in very, I mean, it's like five pages, right? So everything that we have in the CAFER, and they kind of summarize it a bit in those first few pages, and say where the city's going, what their plans are. So it's an extremely interesting read about where the city has been in the past year and what's coming for the future. The other things that I wanted to point out, because there's a lot of information in there, but in the essence of time, we have a couple of other deliverables. One, we refer to as the management letter. This is a letter on internal controls. There were a couple of new comments. One was for the schools and approval of payroll. That was mostly just a documentation issue, and there was turnover in school payroll. So not really surprising when you have turnover in positions like that, that people are now juggling more than one responsibility. So I fully do expect that comment will go away next year. The next comment is approval of project changes, which you guys can all discuss at length another time, but just mostly talk about following the process of approving before purchasing. There were some practical comments on internal controls that are still applicable. Some of them are just at the schools, it's just the way that staffing is set up, and it's very difficult with a small staff size to fully segregate all the duties. And sometimes even though you have three people who can do something, as long as they're looking over each other's shoulder, which is what's happening, then it's okay, but it's still our responsibility to exploit those things that we see. The last part of that letter, there's like seven, 10 pages of what's coming for accounting and other matters. What is the government accounting standard support come to? There is going to be a pretty big standard in the next two years on leases, and we've been talking with Melissa and Karen about how are we going to implement this and what kind of impact will it have? It's going to be a big deal for all local governments, kind of how pensions and OPEP kind of rocked things for a little bit. The leases are going to do the same thing. Gatsby's really into putting liabilities on your balance accounts right now. That's just what Gatsby's doing. So that'll be coming out in the next couple of years. The last thing I want to talk about, the third letter, the letter to those charged with governance, which is all of you guys. This is mostly boilerplate, so for those of you who savor and hold on to all your reports, this one's going to look pretty similar, but that's because it's pretty important. We reiterate every year. For instance, your financial statements have estimates, right? We all know that, but it's worth mentioning that these are estimates. They're based on historic information, actuary information, but they are estimates nonetheless. The next thing, which is pretty impressive, to be quite honest, was that we did not, as auditors, we did not have any audit adjustments. And I do want to stress that, because I have a lot of clients, and I had two this year that didn't have audit adjustments. So it's a really big deal. It's, you know, we come in and we look at everything, you know, we do a risk-based approach certainly, but something certainly to pat yourself, finance departments, and really the whole city on the back for not, or uncorrected, I guess, to be fair. So attached to the back of that letter is about pages of management representations. So as I said, when we come in here, we're asking lots of questions, and we don't stop. But essentially, this letter is really reiterating and reassuring that everything that we were told and questions that we asked were all valid and accurate to the best of management's knowledge. So that letter, we do not issue our report without that letter being signed, and it's signed by schools and also signed by the city. So again, that's why it's so nice to have a school board here, because a lot of times I don't get to present to a school board, and you are a very large part of the CAFER as well. So that letter is signed by both the city and schools. So, any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Before we move on, maybe we can start with school board, if you have any questions. Mr. Z is ill and wasn't able to make it with us tonight, so I just wanted to make that announcement. Would you like to start with your question or comments on your side?
Any questions or comments from the board?
All right, how about city council? Ms. Arndt?
Thank you for the update. So I can't admit to reading the whole thing, but for the pages I did read. On page 4J, in the management discussion analysis, I think it's probably more a question for Mr. Shields. So as expected, I think we expected every department to have an increase in spending. I did note that public safety and public works, which I think, given our concerns over traffic calming and stormwater and other things that fall in those areas in police enforcement, the spending has actually decreased in FY19 versus 18. Is that due to underspending in those departments, or were there other reasons why we actually spent less than we thought?
So for both, the budgets did increase, and so the spending was underspending, as you note, and that's principally due to vacancies. And this fiscal year, public works, if you recall, we had a lot of transition in engineering and other parts of public works, but engineering is kind of where it was most acute. Those positions have all been filled since. And that is a portion of what you all, when we talk about the year-end underspending, those two departments were significant contributors to it. IT is another area where we had vacancy savings. So that's a response.
And then on page 4B, there was a comment about how spending exceeded revenues this year, primarily by using proceeds from debt issuance in prior years. So normally, we don't want to spend more than we have, but the fact that we're able to spend based on debt issuance from prior years makes it okay. Is this a risk that we think we have for future years?
Well, it is, so the majority of that would have been the city hall project. That was debt that was issued several years ago, and so we pulled and spent it down this year. That will happen again with the school project, probably very significantly. We issued all the debt in FY20, and we'll be still paying invoices on that project, certainly into FY21, but potentially into FY22, but probably not likely.
Question, I guess, for the auditors. As long as you know kind of where the money is coming from, from accounting perspective, I assume that's fine, even if you're not spending from the current fiscal year, is that?
Oh, yeah, and that's how, I mean, if you're issuing debt, right, and these capital projects are going to take multiple years, so that's.
And my last one is more of a comment, so more of a PSA for everybody. So on page 159 to 160, I always find this really helpful in the CAFER, which is essentially what I call city by the numbers. So it calls out, for example, how many news releases did we do? How many calls for service did we have in the city? How many DWI arrests we had? How many library books were checked out? So I always think that's a really helpful kind of indicator of activity in the city. So more of a PSA for my colleagues.
Mr. Lichtenhouse? Thank you. So in the short form version, the letter that you wrote to us about internal controls, there was a comment on page 5 related to change orders, which is an issue that we ran into, related to the city hall construction. We've asked a lot of questions about lessons learned as it would apply to the library project. So in terms of some of the things that you guys have called out for internal controls in the internal audit that you did, is there action items to help resolve that, things that we get feedback on, or is this just calling things out, it's up to the city to put plans and processes in place to make sure we put the appropriate controls in there?
I think the city has the appropriate policies in place, and it's just a matter of under time crunches and stressful situations that those policies are followed. So I think, and this was very openly discussed with us. It's not something that we, as auditors, found, right? It was, as soon as we walked in the door, it's like, hey, you know, you're going to find this, and we want you to find it.
Yeah, I guess, let me rephrase that. I didn't think it was kind of an aha moment, we've talked.
Right, yeah. It's.
Nothing that was unearthed. I was more curious as to resolution, if there are processes, if there are guidelines that, you know, we could review to effectively deal with that, call it a roadmap that would help us to learn from, from that, things that we can follow to improve the processes themselves, or is this just literally calling it out without you guys providing that roadmap from kind of an independent perspective?
To that, I would say, you know, the city has procurement policy, right? So I feel like that's the roadmap to follow, right? But, right, beyond that, I don't have further recommendations. You know, we could sit down and talk further about it, but I don't want to say that there's a one-way to go.
You know, a comment I would make on it, and we will be given council lessons learned document at your next meeting. You'll probably have a deeper discussion of it at your sixth meeting. But it really came down to the city hall project and the completeness of the project starting. And so the lesson learned is that the library plans have been before us now, with adequate time, their staff will be there to make sure we're comfortable with every detail, from the data drops to where the outlets are. We didn't have that same level of plan review since the whole. So when the contractor is rolling, this is the sort of the pressure, the time crunch, the project manager is approving changes in the field in order to keep the project good, across the ways, and that makes the pressure in the solution to it is.
Mr. Snyder?
Thanks much. Just following up on page 5, on the shorter document, there are really, there's a point made regarding the schools and a point made regarding the city. And while I understood the city manager a minute ago to talk about lessons learned, it talks about here in internal controls about approving change orders. So my question is, what internal controls will you put in place regarding approval of change orders in the future? And then I would ask the same thing about the schools to address the comment made to them. Thank you.
I think the, you know, what we would need to do is, there's a couple steps with it. One, for the change orders themselves, they do have multiple eyes on them, and so there are segregation of duties and controls for those. We had very little contingency for the city hall projects. So the other step, which is another breakdown in our process, is coming back to council to get an authorization for the change orders. And that is, that's when time crunch and the time pressure came into play, because that can be, you know, a month-long process. So what we will do, I think, going forward for the library project, A, we'll have a contingency, so that ideally we won't need to come back to council for a contract amendment, but we will keep a regular log of those and keep the council informed of the change orders as they're coming along, just for transparency and sake. I think that's the other improvement that we need to make, particularly to the city hall project relative to the library.
With respect to the comment on page 5 about the approval of payroll and the segregation of duties, it is something, as the auditor indicated, that very much being a small shop, we do have some cross-functioning. We've added the chief operating officer's signature as an additional piece. We've been following the payroll and the separation of duties, but we haven't actually signed off on those. So the additional step that we're going to be taking is signing off on those.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
This may be more a question about the budget than about the audit, but since the letter at the beginning is included in the lower case Roman numeral 5 page, the reference to the net fiscal impact of several of the more recent mixed-use projects is a 2017 number. Does that reflect the fact that we've just not yet updated the fiscal impact model beyond 2017, and are we thinking about getting that updated next year?
Yeah, we're updating it this year, and so that is an old number.
Okay, so the number is quite likely higher than 1.7 million, certainly not less. Okay. The only other question I have, and this, I'm not sure who this really applies to, but when I first started here, you know, and got this the first time, obviously, it was mostly new to me. And, you know, and I remember when Ms. Connelly came on, we spent a fair amount of time trying to understand where various buckets of money were and how they were accounted for. And then council joined together all of us and aligned the tax year with the budget year so that we would not end up in the position of those being offset in a way that annually yielded a number that was typically a surplus, you know, about the time of year when those numbers came clear. So we have aligned the budget and the tax year now. Is there anything that we should do, can do? We're still ending up with pretty good numbers in terms of surpluses, and that's obviously a good thing, but there may be years where that's not such a good number, and those are going to be very unpleasant years, I think, because we've gotten used to good times. In terms of an audit being able to help us, you know, predict or manage ourselves, I mean, I think we, fair to say, managed pretty conservatively, and that's why our numbers look good. But at the same time, the numbers might not always look good, and there is still a challenge in communicating to the public about why we fight over, why we discuss over, you know, $300,000, $400,000 in the budget, and then six months later, we end up $2.3 million to the good. Is there anything that we can, should, might do to, or that gap?
So specifically to revenue forecast, actual to budget? So the biggest step we did is, which you referenced, is aligning the tax year and the fiscal year for property tax. That was our biggest variable. Now about 30% of our revenues, local taxes, sales, meals, all those vast types of taxes which we're talking about a lot later on tonight, that's really where your variance can occur now, and so it's much tighter than it used to be. If that is your question, or can we get it tighter still? That's what we always endeavor to do.
You know, I think you're doing probably the best that can humanly be done, but it is still a messaging challenge to explain to people, you know, and I'm not sure we've kind of quite gotten on top of that, you know. I think we're getting there, you know? I think the school board and the council are getting to the point where if we do have money that, call it what you will, you know, surplus or underspending or whatever, you know, we have a way to deal with that. It's different from how it was done when I first started, and that's good. But we still, I think, have a challenge in communicating with the public.
When we have surpluses.
Yeah.
If I may add to that, Ms. Duncan, is that in the last year or two, we have seen special spike primarily because of the construction activity, the permit fees that's related to it, and also the investment income, earnings on our investment income that has been, so those are kind of things we have kept in mind, and we are going to align the next year's budget with that. However, those are more of the one-time nature, that are not that easy to predict and kind of go along as we go. But our tax revenues are more or less along the budgeted amounts. We have, of course, bypassed that even on the tax revenues, but not by that much. It's the other revenues that kind of gave the boost to the one-time surplus last year.
Okay, I think that's a good start on trying to explain to folks. Somebody, the other day, you know, online, I said something about an expense that we, you know, probably want to discuss trying to bear, and I said, we'll have to find money for that. And they said, where do you find the money? And partly, the answer is what you just said, you know, investments have done better than anybody ever expected, and permit fees, those are a little different. Those are supposed to be in a lockbox, you know, kind of to pay for the people who are doing the inspections, but just, you know, let's always be thoughtful about how to explain why we end up to the good, because someday, we're going to have to explain why we're not ending up to the good, and it'll be more credible, I think, if we sort of laid the foundation in good times. Thanks.
All right, before we get to Vice Mayor Connelly, the two newest elected folks from the school board have just joined us. I don't know if you can see them. Ms. Gill, would you like them to join us at the table?
Would you like to join us?
We'll find somewhere.
I don't know. We must be as close as we can find our employees. Would you like to join us? Yeah. It's indeed a short break.
And they're still here, so that's good news. All right, Vice Mayor Connelly? All right, that's all we've got. Is there anything additional on your end? All right, thank you for your audit, your fine work, and for the report you prepared. Look forward to seeing you again soon. All right, so now off to budget presentations. Is that right, Mr. Shields?
That is right. And so we'll start with Ms. Bawa will provide a revenue forecast, and sort of following up on Mr. Duncan's comments, we do go into some detail in some of the key local tax revenues, comparing budget to actual over prior years. And the goal of that is just to be transparent about our revenue forecast. Revenue forecasts matter a whole lot, and we want to be open book about it, and we go into much more detail when we do them, but this is sort of a good high-level view of the data that we look at. We want everybody to see it. I'll speak a little bit about some of the budget drivers and the schedule, and then we'll turn it over to Dr. Noonan to talk about, and there's a school presentation, and we'll get all that information out there and then have discussion and feedback.
Good evening, members of the council and school board members. We have for you in preparation of the fiscal year '21 budget development. Today, we'll review the preliminary revenue projections, the budget cost drivers on the city side and the school side, along with the capital funding plan update that we have issued, the bond issuance, and finally, the budget calendar at the end. So a closer look at the national and regional economy, what it's telling us now, according to the Federal Reserve Chairman, the overall U.S. economy is growing at a moderate rate, and we expect to see more of the same, is what he has stated. I'd like to say that the U.S. economy is in its 11th year of expansion, the longest record that has been supported by rising incomes. I'd like to say that the U.S. economy is in its 11th year of expansion, the longest record that has been supported by rising incomes and solid consumer spending so far. The third quarter, uh, annualized gross domestic product growth rate in 2019 is 1.9%. The second quarter rate was 2.1%. And as released by the Bureau of Economic Analysis, uh, projection for 2020 is 2.0% and for 2021 is 1.9%. So, uh, somewhat static. Uh, U.S. unemployment rate remains a near 50-year low at 3.6%. Employers have added jobs for a record 109 straight months, but the pace of the job creation is slowing down. And the stock market is at record levels as of November. And some of the regional indicators include, uh, Stephen Fuller Institute's reports, uh, 2.1% increase in the Coincident Index, which they define as, um, the current state of the economy. The factors, the metropolitan area economy and the factors they take into account are the consumer confidence, the domestic passenger, um, non-durable goods sales, a lot of non-durable goods. So those are all for the current state, uh, 2.1% increase over September of last year. The leading index, on the other hand, which is designed to forecast the performance of the metropolitan area economy for six to eight months, looking forward in advance, is decreased by 1.4%. They're, uh, projected a decline in that. And that is, um, in anticipation of, uh, market contraction or adjustment, however we all want to look at it. In addition, the Consumer Price Index growth is at 0.9% for the Washington Alexandria area, um, nominally in, uh, increased by 0.1% from July to September. And for the last, um, 12 months, a total of 0.9%. The median, um, home price increased from September of 2018 to September of 2019. We've seen a growth of 2.6% and a projection of a one and a half to 2% growth, uh, for fiscal of '20. The next chart shows, uh, the approved general fund revenue budget of 99.3 million for the current fiscal year for the city. As you can see, we rely, uh, on the real estate taxes for, um, for almost 60% of our revenues. Looking forward at the preliminary revenue forecast for 2021, real estate assessed values are projected to grow at 3.6% with a 70/30 residential commercial split. Rentals are included in the commercial and the condominiums are considered residential. So with that, the new construction of 3.6%, the new construction makes up one-third of that growth, projected growth at 1.2%. We've seen that activity has ramped up for, um, we're seeing a growth. Projections for our neighboring regions include 3.04% Fairfax County, uh, breakdown with residential 2.08%. And they have 1% coming from, um, new construction. City of Alexandria, uh, has reported residential projected growth of 2 to 3%. We are working with other jurisdictions to get, um, their forecast. So that state tax growth, projected growth of 3.6% along with all other tax growths, um, projected at 1.8%. And we'll see those in the following few slides. Uh, we are projecting a total tax revenue growth of 3.1%, uh, which would yield new revenue of, um, 2.5 million in 2021. Slide seven shows, uh, historical real property trends. The total assessed value of real estate is approximately 4.3 billion as of January 2019. Commercial, uh, consistently remains roughly 30% of the total AD, the dark blue, the top section is the commercial, uh, for the last 10 years. And since 2011, uh, both residential and commercial markets have seen gradual growth, uh, residential average growth of 3.6% and commercial of 4.8% during that timeframe. We are familiar with this chart, the impact to the median homeowner, real estate tax bill. The blue bars show the tax rate increase over the last five-year window and the dark blue line, uh, versus that is the increase in median homeowner tax bill. Of the $1,000 increase in median tax bill over the last five years, approximately $450 is for major capital projects. The West Falls Church development has mitigated the tax increase by approximately $550 for an average homeowner. Uh, the next few slides provide a closer look at our local economic indicators, um, and providing 10-year history of budget versus actual for each of the indicators. The first one being personal property tax. For this category, we are projecting a 3.1% decline in 2021 compared to the 2020 budget. As you will see, we've seen a growth up until 2018. And in 2019, the actuals came in 2% below the fiscal year '18. This was primarily due to depreciation of business personal property, which exceeded the, uh, assessment increase from the number of apartments that we get. And we expect to continue this trend for a year or two. And hopefully we should see an increase, uh, with newer businesses coming up in the next two to three-year window. So, uh, we're hoping that this trend is, and this adjustment is for a year or two and, um, we can pick this up going forward. The budget for fiscal year '20 was set at the, um, time, at the same level when we set the budget in April, it was set at the same level as '19. And the '19 actual actually came way below, um, the projection at that time. The three, five, and 10-year averages have been hovering around the 5% line for that category. The next one is the sales tax. It's projected to grow 8.1% over the fiscal year '20 budget. This is, uh, 4% over the fiscal year '19 actual. The growth has been gradual in the last five to six years, except, um, it's been a lot more steep from '18 going to '19. As you'll see, more of a spike with close to 10% increase over the previous year. We have noticed some aberrations in the last few months and, um, the Commissioners of Revenue Office is analyzing the data across jurisdictions and also a breakdown of online versus the point-of-sales, um, tax data. So we may be able to provide a revised, um, projection from that in March when we bring you the, um, proposed budget. Meals tax, um, in fiscal year '21 are projected at 6% over the fiscal year '20 budget, in line with the three-year average, which is 6.6%. This is approximately 5% over the fiscal year '19 actual and has come a little shy of the 6% over the fiscal year '18. So '19 grew over '18 by 6%. Business license tax, uh, we are projecting a 5.2% growth over the '20 budget. The three, five, and 10-year averages are between the 4% and 5% range. And this is another category, if you see up until 2018, the growth has been rather gradual. In '19, the business license taxes have grown significantly, um, with major increases in contracting and professional services, residential rental and specialized occupation in contracting. We saw as much as 50% growth in revenues over fiscal year '18. And to notice that fiscal year '18 was a 1.3% growth over '17. So, um, it has been gradual with that being what fiscal year '19 is. We are projecting that activity to continue and so we're projecting a 5.2% growth in that category. Next slide, page 13, the other taxes, which include transient occupancy tax, cigarette tax, recreation, consumer utility, bank stock taxes, and vehicle rentals. Uh, we actually saw fiscal year '19 a decline of 5% compared 4.7% over the fiscal year '18 actuals. Uh, we are projecting a decline of roughly 5% in '21 over the '20 budget numbers. The transient occupancy tax declines 7%, uh, 7% over fiscal year '18. This makes up 12 and a half percent of the total other tax category. The cigarette taxes were down roughly 18%. Recreation and vehicle license taxes are flat. Utility taxes were down 2%. Only piece of this pie that outperformed the, uh, projection was vehicle rental, which was up by 12%, which makes up less than 5% of the total category. So it's not enough to offset.
Karen, at the Budget Finance Committee, we were talking about why that seemed, why that was going down so much. And one of the things that was discussed is that, um, Oakwood Apartments used to be a short-term rental and it's not anymore. So they're not, now that it falls green, it's trying to rent as regular apartments. They're not collecting transient occupancy tax on all of their short-term rentals. That's what, uh, Jody Acosta said. They were, they were, but they're not anymore. So while there aren't as many students living in those apartments because they've changed their model, it also has changed the sign.
So does that, may I ask, does that money show up somewhere else? I mean, they're renting more apartments. Is this just a flat loss to us?
There's B-Pole, I mean, it's probably slightly increased B-Pole tax from gross rental receipts, but I'm sure it's less than transient occupancy tax would be.
It's pretty low. He added the 2%. Uh, so to recap, the total tax revenues are projected to grow at 3.1%, uh, which would, uh, mean additional revenue of approximately 2.5 million in fiscal year '21. The next, um, slide provides, um, three, five, and 10-year averages for organic revenue growth, which is net of tax increases. As you will see, the expenditures in the last three-year have been less than the revenue growth. And, um, that was planned to address our major capital needs. Also provided here are the seat enrollment and the population changes.
Ms. Bawa, a question on that, uh, going back to populations. So in the CAFRA, we were just reading that since 2010, we've had a 20% population growth. We started around 12,000 and we're close to 15,000 now. How does that match up to the three, five, and 10-year averages there?
I'm, I'm not sure of CAFRA what source this was, the business from Melvin Cooper. We may have to see another source to compare the numbers. Let's take a closer look at the basic cost drivers for fiscal year '21 for the general government. The health insurance, an estimated increase of 10% for the health insurance premiums. Actual rates for 2020 will be available to us in February, so this is the hope in, uh, we look at a 10% increase. To sustain the current year's compensation increase levels, we require an approximately 650,000. Each 1% increase equates to roughly 200,000 people this side. We are estimating a modest 2% increase in various contracts that would, this would include both internal and external, uh, inter-jurisdictional. Internal contracts include, uh, maintenance of city property, technology, utilities, pavings, solid construction, all, all the price. And inter-jurisdictional, uh, social services assistant contract, for example, went up 10% last year. We have, um, Arlington, with them we have the fire and emergency communication. So we are expecting, um, significant increases based on what we saw last year. We do not have any indication of what those increases are going to be. These are, are really are modest estimates at this point. Womata's proposed budget was released, you know, which caps jurisdiction contributions to 3%. The breakdown has not been provided. We hope to get those in the next few weeks. And we do not know what the cities share of that breakdown is yet. However, in addition, they add on to those legislative exclusions and collective bargaining agreements that are still pending for them. The last one that they did was the four-year, which, um, with fiscal year '20 being the last year, they need to negotiate those things for us.
If I could just, um, interrupt. Mr. Snyder's on a number of regional transportation committees. Do you have any more insight on the Womata costs, Mr. Snyder?
Not at this point, but we're sure going to try to keep them down. I noticed that an earlier version on the slide said 350,000 and we're down to 200,000. So, um, that's movement in the right direction.
Yeah, that is, so the slides that were handed out do have a different number, so just.
Uh, we do, we, we are working with them. However, I still do not have a breakdown of what the jurisdictional costs are. But, um, and also on the, the only reason that I reduce, was we reduced that down was because their, um, collective bargaining positions are, normally take over a year and they bill us retro. So in '20, we may not realize the whole 350. We may have to split it across the two years. So it's not a cost that we will not pay. Um, a little bit of good news on the retirement, uh, contribution rates, which dropped, uh, from 14.78 for the police to 10.29 and a minor drop for basic from 4.3 to 4.11. Another increase, potential increase is the Arlington firefighters, uh, which are increasing one person per shift. They're realigning their shift and they're also changing the shift schedule, which would mean a higher contribution for the city. They're, they're, we currently pay 2.3 million and it could mean up to 12% more for us. They could have to add two, um, staff members pay for two this year and two more in '20. So they ramp up four more staff members over two years, including, and they're proposing a five and a half percent increase in fiscal year '20. So it could mean up to 12% increase on our contract now. Shifting the gear to capital funding, uh, this chart attempts to provide the CIP financing plan, um, based on the second and the major issuance for the major CIP that we did recently in November. So I would like to bring your attention to the fiscal year 2020 column. Pardon me, there are a lot of numbers here, but you've seen this chart. This has been revised to reflect the new debt service of 1.65 million in fiscal year 2020. As you re, uh, recall from our last conversation, the issuance was delayed by a few months from April to November. So we did not make any payment on the principal and the interest, uh, in fiscal year '20. This would make the capital reserves, um, use to be delayed. So the 2.9 million that we were projecting to use in fiscal year '20 is pushed off to '21 and onwards. And we would use, um, we would have saving of 1.7 million, uh, underspending that, uh, we are from the tax dollars. Along with the lease payments of 6.5 million, we would end the capital reserve at 9.36 million in fiscal year '20. So all the ending capital reserves have grown by that 2.9 million that we have kind of pushed. And starting in '25, this is a five-year window we're looking at. The idea of the smooth increase in the tax rate was to smooth the payments on the tax, uh, payers, which would be used in the later year. So starting in '25 onwards, the capital reserves begins to, um, diminish significantly because the increases were realized now to pay for the future years. So we don't have to see spikes and drops in increases in those, uh, taxes. So to recap, the one-time funds in fiscal year '20, we are expecting a 1.7 million in, um, savings and debt service that we do to the delayed and also realizing better interest rates than we had expected. The fiscal year '19 year-end report, Human Recall, reported a 2.46 million, uh, underspending, bringing a total one-time availability of 4.2 million, um, uh, one-time funds. Potential use of these one-time funds, uh, include, uh, budget appropriation requests that we will bring forward for library renovation project, the city hall public safety improvement projects, um, neighborhood traffic calming, um, any other intersections and projects that we want to take on. The mulch fat construction, um, this conversation was also brought forward as part of the year-end report. And then, um, the school revenue share that was, um, discussed over the last few months. And with that, uh, the next few slides are on, on the, what goes into planning the budget. the, what goes into planning, the budget planning for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, and I'll hand it off to Mr. Shields.
Briefly on, on the things that will go into our budget planning. Uh, the CIP is under development right now and will be presented to the planning commission in January. That's where a lot of these um comprehensive plan updates get implemented. Um, and we're up, currently updating the environmental sustainability chapter. Uh, so there will be goals and objectives that come out of that, just as the housing chapter was adopted uh just a few months ago. Um, so to get into, um, go to the next slide, um, the council budget guy, uh, guidance is generally driven by those comprehensive plan objectives as well as the council's two-year work plan. Um, and we know some of its key things that we're working on, um, along with core governmental services, but transportation improvements, uh, traffic calming, addressing stormwater needs, um, those are some of the things that we know, um, the priorities in the next year's budget. We'll have a chance to talk about those together strategically with the council when you retreat in January. Uh, but the, the budget guidance statement is also a way to get, send that impulse out early in the budget. Next slide. Um, you know, one thing I'll just note in terms of staffing, um, the work that we are doing here in the city is uh increasingly complex. And our engineers, our urban planners, our IT professionals, our police officers, those are all areas where we're having sort of the greatest challenges, including talent. And, uh, and that improvement process is, it never, it never ends. We're always trying to bring great tal- talent to the, to the city, but that will be, I think, another priority for next year's budget. Um, and then lastly, the last slide, uh, we look to the schedule. Uh, we have scheduled, uh, the council's formal action on budget guidance at your meeting next week on December ninth. Uh, superintendent will be presenting the budget to the school board on January fourteenth. Uh, the CIP presentation to the planning commission in February. Um, school board's uh budget action uh in late February. And then, uh, we'll all come together, uh, for a presentation to council on March ninth, uh, for, uh, the unified budget includes the school board request, uh, two months to work at it together and then adoption, uh, last Monday of April, April twenty-seventh. So those are kind of the key milestones. There are lots of meetings, other smaller milestones, but that's kind of the main structure in which everything hangs. So with that, um, we'll turn it over to, maybe we'll just pause real quickly, see if there's any questions for us before, uh, before we go.
That's it. Why, why don't, before, before we start with the city council side, why don't we start with the school side? See if they have any questions or what they've heard this evening.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, with respect to the one-time funds and the surplus, I guess for this fiscal year, it's two and a half million, is that?
So that was the FY nineteen, underspending and renovation costs.
And so my understanding was back during the budget cycle, there'd been a discussion about the division of that between general government and the school board. I was just wondering what the state of play is with that.
Right. So a letter was received by the city council, um, on, on this point as well. So that is one of the points of discussion.
But, uh, not to press the point, but I thought we had that understanding that it would be divided. Was I, am I missing something?
Um, so we didn't ever reach a formal agreement whether we had that understanding. I think part of the spirit of some, some of our conversations we've had is that, um, you know, certainly we can have that discussion and discussion could also be in the context of whether we'll continue it again for next year's budget. Those are the key, key things that have been discussed.
And then just one follow-up. Could you talk a little bit more about the public safety improvements for City Hall? My understanding was that, was the motive force behind the renovations. So, so what, what does that entail?
Public safety aspects of it? Um, well, that's a, that's a long discussion, but um, you know, the key drivers for the project were, um, relating to the police department, sheriff's operation, court operations, um, for the new council chambers and the courts. And, uh, so that includes the briefings you've gotten from the chief of the police and, um, we can go into the details of those if you'd like, but is there any questions?
Well, I just, is there, is the size of that breadbox with, it looks as if there are several mouths at the trough here for the surplus. And, and how, what, what is, to mix my metaphors, what are the relative sizes of the breadbox?
So the City Hall, um, project, there are change orders that we need to settle out on that project. And a lot of those are still under negotiation. So we don't have a final number on that. Uh, the library renovation project, we're in a much earlier phase. Obviously, we're in negotiation of the GMP, and that project is over budget as well. And that number has not yet been finalized. So the, uh, those are two big things that, uh, we'll be wrestling with in the month of January. Both numbers we hopefully know, certainly the library number will be coming down, and we're pushing up the City Hall number wrapped up by finish month. So January is the time.
Before we continue, it might be helpful for Ms. Bawa to elaborate on the details of the surplus. In other words, underspending, um, additional revenue, you know, revenue above forecast. Could you basically explain to folks what the actual sources of that are?
Sure. So the fiscal year twenty surplus, the one point seven million, is coming from the, uh, delay in the debt service as well as, um, the issuance that has been settled with the lower interest rates that we got, the debt issuance. And, uh, fiscal year nineteen, uh, surplus of two point five, rises of, uh, revenues, um, better than projected, as well as under spending in many departments. The revenues include tax revenues as well as permit revenues, which came much over our, uh, projected with the, uh, economic development activity that's going on in the city. So our tax dollars, um, they were seven hundred and eighty thousand. That was over budget. Um, and when we had, um, discussed the revenue share initially with the schools, at that time, there was a discussion of splitting it equally. Um, however, as Mr. Shields said, with the intent of following that in the next year's budget development as well. So I'm just laying out the numbers, and that's what was reported at, uh, fourth quarter. The revenue surplus at that time was, uh, seven hundred and eighty thousand. So that fifty percent equates to three hundred and ninety thousand.
Maybe you could just elaborate just a bit more. So, cause I think the general public has a misconception of what this means. And so, for example, some things, for example, are permit fees, correct, which are essentially to be put in a lockbox to be used at a later time. That's a portion of it, maybe eight hundred thousand or so, if recollection serves correct. Some, it's underspending, things that need to be spent but have yet not been done, right? And so, could you just talk a little bit more about the buckets and how much are in the different buckets?
Sure. I think the permit fee was about six hundred and fifty thousand over budget. So, uh, depending on how, um, they use, we did use three hundred and fifty thousand of the permit reserve in current year's budget in preparation for more inspectors and uh activity, increased activity for the construction of the founders as well as the high school. So that reserve has gone down by three fifty. The intent was that when the one-time revenues come, we replenish those reserves. And, uh, have not taken any action. It all depends on the need on the other capital projects at this point, on, and how much would be, I didn't even list it here actually, replenishing the permit reserve. Um, but, um, that, that, um, that was one piece. The tax revenues were eight hundred and, uh, what, seven hundred and eighty thousand. Um, the underspending was over a million, I think a million two. Um, so that all kind of together came to two and a half million of underspending. The underspending was largely due to vacancies that we had across many departments, um, IT being one of the major ones. And there was some underspending that was, minor underspending that was planned in order to, uh, use it toward City Hall, but, um, and that will be brought forward, you know, as part of the budget amendments that will come to you in January, once we wrap up the whole project.
So, I'll let you two sort out who goes next, Ms. Shields.
I just want to clarify, Mr. Castillo, what I think Mr. Shields was asking about the City Hall public safety improvements. That is a continuation of the current City Hall project, right? So that's not, that, that's saying that the City Hall project is over budget and the public safety improvements have not been made and those still need to be paid for?
I think it's just a characterization of the entire project.
And do you have a sense of how much that is? What the dollar amount of that is?
Um, it's going to be, uh, well, we, we need to settle it out. So I'd rather not discuss it quite yet, partly because the negotiation's underway right now as to what.
Okay. So, but, so just to be clear, the City Hall is done, it's the public safety aspects of it are not finished and it's coming in over budget?
Yeah. So it's, it's not a new project.
Right. It's not a new project. This is over budget of the City Hall project. Just to be clear. Okay.
Can I clarify a little bit? The City Hall project, its official name is City Hall Public Safety Improvements Project. That's what we have called it. And the main reason for the upgrade was?
Not new money. This is that project coming in much over budget, over what was originally projected. And that's why one-time funds need to be used to finish this project.
That is correct.
Correct.
And Ms. Hardy had a, I'm sorry, I don't know how, who wants to go next?
So while we're doing lots of clarifying, um, so that, again, I think I want to make sure that this point is clear, especially for the press that's listening to this. We do not have four million dollars of free money, right? So for FY nineteen, what I heard was say that only kind of amount of free money we had, i.e. increased revenues, seven hundred and eighty thousand. The rest was due to underspending and then permit fee revenues and other things that came in. So that's when we didn't hire all the people we thought we needed to hire, and we had department vacancies. So only eight hundred thousand or so was actually increased revenues. Did I have that number right?
Tax revenues.
Tax revenues.
Increased tax revenues.
And then for FY twenty, um, we have the one point seven, mainly because we issued debt in November versus April, and then we had a better interest rate. How would you break those down? So how much, because I think what I would call the real money is the better interest rate, where we actually have real savings. Just because we pushed out one debt service, doesn't mean we have twenty-nine years worth of debt service. We still have thirty years, we just pushed it out six months.
So the capital reserve, that, the two point nine million that came from the capital reserve has been pushed, and the one point seven is from the better interest rate. So that is the ta- tax dollars, the one point seven.
So that's just from the lower interest rate?
Correct.
Thank you. I think, um, a general kind of philosophical question I have is, kind of for spending surplus, I think collectively it looks like we have a lot of money to play with, because there certainly are a lot of mouths at the troughs, to continue that analogy. There's probably even another ten items we've gotten requests from, from various folks, beyond the five that are up there. Uh, but I think I generally have a philosophical concern with spending, underspending, um, from the previous year and using it on new projects when we might have sh- shortchanged various departments in the previous year because we didn't hire all the people we needed to hire. So I think just more of a question for us to think about as we, um, debate the upcoming budget amendment.
Mark, back to the school.
I would note that also on the school side, we also did not hire many people and potentially underspent to make sure that we met budget guidance last year. So we had several positions that went unfilled and that do need to be filled, um, that we will probably come back again this year and ask for them that we didn't ask for last year. So I'm sorry, just to follow up on what Mr. Castillo was asking about earlier, with regard to the school revenue share, I guess I'm still not quite clear why that's not, I guess, higher on the list in terms of something that we're looking at, because my understanding was that we had verbal agreement with regard to that. So I'm not really clear, I guess, from your previous answer, where that stands and what we're looking at with regard to the school revenue share. Because that, it seems like we went through a pretty elaborate process and it's taken us a while to get to that point. So I'm just trying to understand why we would abandon it at this point.
I don't think anybody's saying we should abandon it. This is a stat presentation, Shields. But that's certainly something we can discuss, and I think there is certainly some support, maybe from some, if not all of us, to make sure the schools get a portion of this. But I think that, I think the point of clarification was, kind of what is the money to play with, or what is the amount that's not, um, slotted for something already? In terms of, for example, like the permit fees, it's always been kind of a lockbox that it stays, the permit fees stay to hire inspectors and other things for the additional development that we've got planned, for example, the ten acres. So I think that's something we should be discussing right now, today at this table. But I don't think any has been decided. That's just the presentation we just wrote.
That is not a prioritized list. I think folks are just clarifying that we don't have four point two million dollars to split, even in the spirit of the revenue share. There was a, it was formulaic in that memorandum of understanding. And I think some of the hesitation from folks is that there was nothing signed on the dotted line. There were a number of us that were involved in drafting that in the spirit, and also verbal agreements. So I think that there are some of us that look at that as, as good as, as written. But that has not been discussed in consensus at this particular point in time. But again, just to be clear, we're not talking about splitting four point two million. We're going to have four point two million dollars of free money, as some folks like to, to look at.
Can I ask a couple of questions, since I have the mic? Or do I need to yield back? Is this to back in the ping pong?
I don't know. I think we should let the school board folks go first. They're, I don't know, guests or.
So I actually want to step on some topic. Uh, thank you, because I was remembering since I didn't have the paper from me. Thank you for all the clarifications. I would, I would very much like to see the breakdown of those top three lines. It's not the potential use of the one-time funds, but the, the thing that's, the items that you've just explained about the sources of each of those, because I would not munge them together. It seems to me that they're significantly different. If we're delaying funding and the expense is just, we're going to pay out of the capital reserve, we're going to repay later, that's one thing. Um, if it is funding that had already been given to the general government to spend, and the general government underspent, for example, because they're a vacancy, that's another thing. That's normally something that you would be programing internally. If it's additional revenue that came in, then that, I mean, and I'm not, I, I, I get the, I just don't understand the envelope for the permit fees, and if that's, if that's legally restricted in some way, or we've had a historic practice. I'd like to see it broken down so that we, I suspect, I know we're talking about in terms of funding new things, a much smaller amount than four point two million. But it's, it's very hard for me to sort of even engage in that discussion without not just a verbal description of the general buckets it's supposed to be, seeing in writing what the amounts are, um, uh, what the, what bucket they came from, uh, and a further discussion of the restrictions around each of those buckets, for example. That permit fees are considered, I, I just, I, I've never heard before that they're in a lockbox. And that may very well be. I just don't have the background or understanding to make conclusions. So I, I in a sense would almost rather not talk about that tonight if we were, because I don't feel like I've got the detail to answer those questions. This is the first time I've seen this.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable request. Maybe we can do that in short order.
Yeah, the detailed discussion of this will be in January when we consider a budget amendment. Um, the, and the reason it's presented so starkly like this, and I, I grant you, in some respects, it's not a great way to present it because it's, it seems like a big number. But we also just wanted to be respectful of the fact that, that, uh, you know, these are numbers that we're looking at. We've discussed them with the council before, we didn't want them to be hidden. Um, but there is nuance behind it, that we're not properly capturing this.
I, I know that Ross would like to ask a question, but I've got one on point, and then I'll hold one back because I'm building on something you said, sir. Uh, one part of that, and else is building on, fill your, your comment, right? The, this spirit and the written-down draft of revenue agreement were very specific about what money was considered to be additional revenue above four. So knowing that number and then looking at the formulaic description of that might, might help dial back a little bit of the stress there, because that would be the spirit.
Dave, do you have a follow-on to that?
So, um, uh, uh, first of all, a question, um, I want to go back to- So, first of all, a question, I want to go back to slide number three for a second. So, I'm a little bit concerned about these revenue projections, because they seem a bit optimistic. It's this that says the assessed value, it's not that one, it's something that says whatever, whatever number you've got, five? Okay. So, I'd like to know more about why we're projecting we're going to do better on residential increase than the City of Alexandria, which is a direct beneficiary of HQ2, or a potential beneficiary, but certainly not as direct as Alexander and Arlington. So, I have some questions about what seemed to be surprisingly optimistic, even compared to our neighboring jurisdictions. And that's nothing that needs to be answered tonight, but it's something very relevant as we go forward. Also, I want to point out, there's an emergent issue that was mentioned verbally that isn't among the list of issues, and that's the stormwater and sewer, storm sewer work, which is a citywide issue of very significant ramification. So, both with respect to that emergent issue, as well as the emergent issue of traffic home, I need a sense about what can we do, when can we do it, and how much it's going to cost in order for revenue planning. These are things that affect the entire city, whether you have people in the schools or not. Both are significant issues, both are urgent issues. So, I'm concerned about those being fully discussed and considered, along with the capital, the ramifications of the City Hall and the library. Thank you.
All right. So, back to slide five, Karen. The, just to clarify on some of these numbers, the growth that's being projected, is that value of existing stock increasing, or does that include the new construction? It's being added to it? Are we talking about the total pie growing, because market value is increasing? Are we talking about total pie growing by 3.6%, which includes new construction, which has to do with that? But does that include throwing new construction value into the mix? Okay. All right. So, the, the percentage increases below in Fairfax County, City of Alexandria, is at the same apples-to-apples comparison, where they're looking at increase in value of the existing stock, excluding new construction being added to the mix?
Construction, oh, sorry, or market growth. But for Fairfax, they have, they parsed out the residential, the commercial, and the new construction for both residential and commercial separately. We are close to the new construction mark, we're 1.2% of our total plan of 3.6.
So, we're, so just to be clear, we're expecting, and I'll get to my point here in a second, we're expecting our residential assessment base to grow 3.7, which includes new construction?
That's correct.
Okay. And our market growth net of the new construction is 2.8%?
That's correct.
Okay. And our 3.7 is an apples-to-apples comparison to the 3% in Fairfax County?
That, that's a blended, right? That is, 3% is blended commercial.
Blended, because it has not residential in there.
Okay, so, 3.7 to the 2.
Right.
3.6.
3.6 is apples-to-apples.
So, 3.04.
Both inclusive of new construction.
Exactly. Inclusive of residential, commercial, market growth as well as new construction.
And our residential would be, okay, would be 2.8 versus the 2.0. Okay. Yeah, so, what I, one point that I want to note, and not to dig back into the waters on our own, there's still, there are really interesting data points in here that Council and Hardy points out, and I think it's important just to kind of set baseline tone and context of our discussion around budget. There is a reason that this year, and I believe last year and the year before, possibly the year before that, our market value increased where our assessment base on the residential side, exclusive of new construction, continues to outpace some of our names. And there's a reason for that, it's simple supply-demand, folks wanted to move into the city of Fall Street. And it's important to recognize the reason that folks want to move into the city of Fall Street for a number of reasons. Schools being one, city being another, and all of the different ingredients that go into making up these budgets, which is good news. It impacts some of our vision challenges that we have related to affordability, but there are only certain things that we can solve on when it comes to supply, if they want to move here, so the value of our homes increase. One of the things that we need to be focused on, as it relates to budget concerns, in my opinion, because having put budgets together in the private sector, there's always a lag in terms of performance and the investments that you make years before. Because of underspending that we've had in the past, because we haven't been able to fill vacancies, which are challenges in the market, or in some cases, just simply having to keep up with demand, those chickens eventually come home to roost and they impact our ability to remain competitive, to drive the type of performance that we see in our tax revenues, which again are driven from the investments that we make in the city and schools themselves. And so, I urge folks on both sides to take a look at some of the numbers that we have in our audit, as well as some of the challenges that we have, to continue to make the investments, which will hopefully lead to the type of performance that all of us sit here licking our chops over, related to budget surplus and a number of other things. And that's important, again, to make sure that we continue to invest in the right areas to stay ahead of this, so we don't see numbers trending the other way. And I see some troubling things just over the last couple of years, and not blaming anyone, but in terms of investments in staff and resources, which are to some extent a product of the market that we're in right now. But we have to focus on making those investments, so we can continue to drive the type of performance and the type of supply-demand fundamentals that we need in order to support these types of budget conversations. So, again, I think it's great that we continue to outperform the market, and I think it's a function of good government and good schools here, and making investments in the right areas, which allow us to command those high rates. So, I just wanted to make that point at the beginning of this budget conversation. It's, it's kudos to everyone for making those investments, but we have to continue to do that. Don't take your foot off the gas and we don't get too comfortable, so to speak.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Just to flip back to the revenue surplus briefly, and your question, Mr. Castillo, reminded me of this. Typically, we would have solved all of our surplus stuff in September, when we looked at things. So, it's odd that it's still hanging out there in December, waiting for an answer. And the reason for that is because we're still waiting for the library renovation numbers and the City Hall public safety numbers. So, because we aren't going to get those numbers until January, we made the decision that we would not parse everything out in September this year. So, that is why it's still hanging out there as a question. Hi, everyone. We'll hew to the spirit of the revenue sharing agreement, because I think it served us so well last year, and City Council will be discussing that in December, January.
Well, I appreciate this. I think one of the things that, at least I, I'm not going to speak with the school board, but one of the issues that I think we're wondering about is, I think it was our understanding that we had the deal, and so, we're now wrestling with the fact that well, September came and went, and now January will come, and it's not clear that this is still on the table, and that's a little unsettling. I think the other thing that we should think about from a budgetary standpoint, to Mr. Littenhouse's point, is one of the big areas on the school budget that has fallen short consistently, year after year, is professional development and training. That's one of the first things. That's actually one of the last things that we cut, and we always cut it. So, we have a teacher shortage in Virginia, chronic, and professional development is a huge aspect that we can attract and retain and develop our profession. So, as we look forward to the next budget cycle, I certainly hope that human capital aspect of the school board's budget will get the attention that it honestly has a full capacity for investment.
Okay. I mean, I would suggest that the information that's been requested is very relevant to these ongoing discussions, and I think people do want to hew to the spirit of cooperation and the discussions and agreements, really might want to characterize that in this past cycle. And so, I wouldn't take away from tonight's discussion so far, that there's a desire to undo any good work that's been done last year, but just to try to better appreciate and understand where the different numbers lie and where they may be committed to, or what they actually represent, so we all can understand kind of what's going on.
Could I?
Of course. Off, just one thought. Thanks to everybody for continuing to press on what the numbers really are and need to be. It reminds me of when Tarter and I came on first, seven years ago, and really tried to dig hard into understanding why the surplus in the summer of 2012 was what it was and what would be done with it. And that was the beginning of a good, you know, sometimes contentious, but a good conversation that we had every year about budgets. So, let's keep digging on that, and I appreciate the manager's interest in, and Ms. Bowles too, in making sure the public understands what we're talking about. Ms. Connolly's clarification is very important, the City Hall and, and library projects are obviously on our side, on general government, kind of extraordinary events, and we do want to try to get them as right as we possibly can. To follow on what Mr. Littenhouse said, whatever we decide the numbers are finally going to be, the chart that's, drugstore reading glasses on, the chart that's on page 16, or the slide number 16, is the one that I would be interested in further discussions and understandings about where each of us sees us going as a city in terms of the percentage of funds that we allocate to general government and the school transfer. I'm pleased to see that, at least for the last five years, I guess I can almost go back seven years now, but general government has gone 4.7%, and school transfer has gone 6.4% in that seven-year period, at the time that the seat enrollment on the school side's gone almost 3% and the city population's gone almost 2%. You know, I know that school seats and population are not, you know, the only drivers of cost, I understand that, but still, they are, they are drivers and they're numbers that are easy to understand and numbers that we'll have in more specificity when we get the census in next spring. But to the point of some of the work that has not been done to the degree that maybe we might hope that it would be on the general government side, I'm just wondering what folks' views about sustainability of a difference in the allocation of, say, a number like 4.7, or let's just take the five-year number, 2.4% school transfer, 4.7. Is that kind of difference sustainable, desirable, where we want to be as a community over the long term? Maybe it is, maybe there's, you know, a one-time or one-budget-year surge in allocation to the general government that will take care of the City Hall and the library, and perhaps some staffing needs that really have gone unmet on our side. That would help even those numbers up a little bit. Like I said, once we've decided what the numbers are, I would be curious to see, I mean, we're just assuming that there's a 50-50 split of whatever the surplus has finally decided to be, but I assume that that would perpetuate the fairly significant difference between what the general government expenditure growth has been and what the school transfer has been. And I would just like us, if we're going to do that, to explain that to people and make sure that they're on board for it.
Ms. Messer, did you know, I'm sorry.
As long as we're talking about this slide, I think there's a line on here that I would like to sort of highlight, just to get information out to the community about that. And that's the, the seat enrollment versus the growth in school transfer. You can look at those numbers and draw the conclusion that, that they're not very well connected, and that would be incorrect. I think a more correct assessment is that the seat enrollment is only part of the story, and that school costs are driven by factors in ways that are not necessarily the same in other parts of our, you know, our operations. If we have an increase in a class where we've got one extra, we've got an extra class with three, four, or five more kids than we, than our planning factors allow, we need to bring in a new teacher. And that's a significant increase that wouldn't look like a significant increase in the seat enrollment, if it took a semester. And sometimes it's not just a teacher, it's a teacher and a paraprofessional. Sometimes it's not just a kindergarten teacher and a kindergarten paraprofessional, it might be an English teacher or a math teacher at some other level, but we also need, because the enrollment has increased above a threshold that's in planning factors. And so, it's important to keep in mind that that 1.8 or 1.8 or 3% annualized, which you're looking at, it's just only one part of the story, and it certainly isn't the, it certainly isn't the full picture. So, I think you need to be careful. We all, just for, make sure we keep that in mind carefully. And then, there's also the fact that even if there weren't an increase in the, in the enrollment, as with the general government side, there's just an organic growth in cost for keeping the people that are already on staff and keeping them well compensated and keeping them in a competitive environment, or different jurisdictions, you have the same issue there. So, it's just something to keep in mind, that, that seat enrollment line is potentially a little bit, it's easy to draw the line.
I think, that point well-taken. I think the situation you're under, when you do that, you know, you have three or four more kindergarten kids than fits into your planning factors, and I'm not trying to micromanage your business here. If you decide you need to hire that extra teacher, then what you end up with is kindergarten classes across the board, which are well below, or I guess better, you could say, than your planning factors. And, you know, instead of a class of 23 kids, you end up with classes of 18 or 19, because you did hire that extra teacher. And that's, you know, your business and fine to do, as long as it fits within the bigger picture and as long as people understand that. That is a challenge. I'm not sure what the, and I appreciate your second point about the importance of competitive pay, because I think, one thing at least that I've learned in the process of the City Hall and library projects is, you know, we're doing it the right way with a high school. We're, you know, hiring the right people, a whole team of them, you know, you can fill up the room with the people who are working on the high school project, and it's going to be well done. On the city side, I think, you know, we've done the very best we can with frankly, a thinner bench and existing staff doing things that are a little bit perhaps beyond their normal scope of work. And I'd like, I'd like us not to do that, you know, if I had my choice, but I understand that we're not going to spend the kind of effort that we're going to spend on the high school, because it's such an important project, on City Hall or the library. The downside of that is, we're also not going to get, you know, necessarily the degree of, we're going to get a good project, but it may not be as fabulous as the high school is going to be. Competitive salary is, is very important on the city side, in the areas that Mr. Shields and Ross to some degree talked about, you know, we need good engineers, good IT people. We need a surge on our side in competitiveness for pay for key positions as we, you know, head into the next couple of years, I think. And that's just something that we're going to be looking at, I think, when we get to our part of the budget.
Mayor Beth Tooth has asked that we continue on. We should probably get on, at least with the school board's presentation. Why don't we take Mr. Snyder's last comment?
Just, just to follow up on, on a comment that came up about the lockbox for the permit fees. My understanding is that was part of our action, that the permit fees were significantly increased, and I think the lockbox was part of that, a formal action, and was certainly part of the staff material. So, I think that ought to be circulated to people, that action, because I do recall specifically that we acted to put that lockbox on as partly for justification for the significant increase in permit fees. So, that'll be relevant. Secondly, with regard to the relative revenue sharing, I'd be interested in seeing the documents and the materials and the exchanges that led to that, so that we're clear about the extent of that. I didn't recall formal action, but there may have been formal action and there may have been discussions, but I think we need to sort of make that clear to everyone, what, what is the basis for that understanding? Just as I think it's clear we need to put before the public the basis of the understanding that the permit fees would be lockboxed. Thank you.
Just one last little quick thing. I think Mr. Duncan's idea is great about looking at numbers, but as with mutual fund results, for example, since the Great Recession, it's really important when your timeline starts because real per pupil expenditures and Falls Church fell dramatically in the wake of the Great Recession. So where you put your baseline is vitally important. The real inflation-adjusted per pupil expenditures in Falls Church is below what it was in 2007, even 2013. So the latest number I have is fiscal year '16, so that bears some looking into. But the other thing, since this is my last time with you, I can't believe we're here arguing over these things or discussing over these things now. I don't want that to take away from everything that's been accomplished because I'm frankly astonished at what we've accomplished. And I will be watching remotely in next year, and I'm confident that we can make all this work. And I do think we have to realize the glass is 99% full. So I thank everyone.
And I'm going to go. I'm going to jump in. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Chair Gill and school board members, and City Manager Shields. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to be able to share an opportunity to talk about our budget work and the joint work that we've done together. I just want to just tip my hat to Vice Mayor Connolly for continuing with the zipper analogy. You know, it really is quite an accomplishment, sort of picking up on what Mr. Castillo just mentioned, how far we've come and looking at that, at the process and projected excitement over the next couple of years as we complete the work of the high school and the 10-acre site and the like is really exciting. So thank you for pulling together that zipper. I have a couple of people that are here tonight, I just want to take a quick second to recognize. First is Kristen Michael. Kristen is here, she's our chief operating officer with the schools. She's worked, she works very closely with Ms. Bowles and Ms. Messer as well. Tricia Minson, who's our school's attorney, is here and works very closely with Carol Costery. John Brett, our communications person, is here, works very closely with communications folks here in the city on the general government side. And Michelle Kopic is also with us, still here, yeah, Michelle's still here. And Michelle is the budget director. So tonight, what I'll share with you is really a joint presentation, I just happen to be the point person that's sharing it with you. So with that, I'll try to move through these relatively quickly, because I think a lot of the conversations that you've had so far sort of pull in some of the conversations that we're going to be having as well. So let me start with sort of our priorities, just as a division. Last year, when we had our time together, where we had a nice meal and we sat down and we had a placemat set out for you, we have subsequently updated that placemat. And at your places this evening, you have in front of you a revised placemat, which is up here. This really, the piece that I think is important in this is not necessarily that the mission statement is the same, but that we are really committed to the three top line in dark blue ideas. The first is really doubling down and paying attention to International Baccalaureate for All Students. That means that all of our classrooms in our system, regardless of whether or not International Baccalaureate classes are or not, are infused with those and grounded with those practices associated with the approaches to learning and approaches to teaching that come from the International Baccalaureate program. We encourage all of our students and all of our staff and our community members to become active, compassionate, and lifelong learners as indicated by International Baccalaureate. As a consequence of that sort of notion of becoming an IB for all, there are some relative challenges for us, not just from an operational perspective with respect to getting students into classes that are aligned to the IB, but also sort of Mr. Castillo was mentioning earlier, making sure that all of our teachers are trained up in what do the approaches to learning and approaches to teaching look like. And that is something that we pay a lot of attention to, to make sure every single one of our classes are infused with those IB skills and knowledge. The second is really promoting and supporting this culture of care in our community. We believe strongly that in order for us to build really great humans in our school system, the first thing we need to be able to do is to build great relationships with them, along with our colleagues and their parents and families and the like. And through that, understanding the diversity that comes with our system, we are far more diverse now than we ever have been here in the city of Falls Church. And as a consequence of that, we're seeing more students that are coming in that are English language learners, we're seeing more students that are in special education. And as a function of that, all of those class sizes are smaller and kind of goes back to that other conversation that we were having with respect to cost drivers in the system. And then lastly, we're about closing gaps. We really believe that when we say all in the city of Falls Church schools, we mean all. And we're committed to making sure that we provide an equitable educational program for every single student that hits our doors. And when we talk about equity in our system, what we mean is giving every student what they need at the right time and the right moment. And it's not the same for every kid. Equity doesn't mean equal. So ensuring that our students that are language learners get what they need in the area of language, making sure our special ed students get what they need, making sure that our really high-flying advanced academic students are what they need to accelerate and extend and enrich their own learning. And all of that sits on top of this idea of my IB learner profile, which you see at the bottom of the placemat, which then builds on our slogan for the year, which is sharpening our 2020 vision. And we are really committed to ensuring that we have a really strong vision for what schooling in the city of Falls Church is going to look like now and into the future. So tonight, when you came to your places, city council members, you found our t-shirt from this year's convocation. Some of you were there and maybe got one, so I'd invite you to pass that along perhaps to your child, it's a good sleeping shirt because I think they're all extra-larges, but anyway, something to take with you that really speaks to who we are as an organization. We have some really great news. This is just one piece of information that we want to share with you, and that's that our standards of learning, again, which is just one measure of success, for the first time in several years, hit the 90% pass rate in all five of the tested areas. So you look at reading, writing, mathematics, social studies, or history and science, pass rates in 2018, '19 were 91, 90, 91, 95, and 91 respectively, compared to the state pass rates, which are on the far right. Again, that is baseline information for us, I think. We would expect all of our students to achieve that goal. We do struggle, and we struggle when we disaggregate data by our students that are in public, solve our students who are in special education, to make sure that all of those students also are achieving at those high levels. But we do aggregate really well as a school system, and we have a lot to be proud of. Another point of pride for us, and this is more of an eye test than it is anything that you can read from your seat, but I do invite you, the public, to really go and look at our website. Just turned over a new website in the last two weeks. It's fantastic. We've got an app that's rolled out as of Thanksgiving. We would invite you to download the new app for the city of Falls Church schools. But this is the project update that came in October about the high school project. It's been mentioned a couple of times tonight. Pictures that you see in there are not even where we are at this point. So just for example, you see the exterior waterproofing being installed there, you see rebar and anchors being installed. You don't even see the exterior walls in the foundation anymore because they've backfilled. The rebar's been all filled in, we've got slab on grade. We actually have our first ground floor that has been, that's covering the underneath the gym, all of the classrooms and the like are being filled in. If you go onto our website, you can see the live camera feed during the day, it's even lit up at night a little bit, so you can even see it at night. But what's really kind of cool about it is, if you know what you're looking at, it starts to make sense to you a little bit. So as you go on, and I would invite you to do that, look at the steel that's going up. And on the far right-hand side, if you look at camera two, you will see the theater, where the theater stage is going to be, and you can begin to see the seating, the rake of the seating. And to the left of that, you can imagine what the main gym is going to look like and what the auxiliary gym is going to look like. But these reports are published monthly. We're excited about having them out there because it does show what is the project status, overview, how are we doing on our timeline, and how are we doing on our budget. And right now, I'm proud to submit to you tonight, as we head into our budget process, that we are on budget. We've got a long way to go, but a lot of our risk has been mitigated with the excavation that's been done. We've got two big cranes out there that are slinging about 80, 80 pieces of steel a day. So we're going up quick. Just to sort of contextualize tonight's presentation, I wanted to take a second just to talk a little bit about last year's budget approach, because I think it's important in the context of what we're doing this year. Last year, some of our focused and really high priorities were on employee compensation, not unlike it has been in the past. Last year, we were able to provide a step increase on all of our employees and 1% cost of living adjustment as well. We increased our substitute pay by $2 an hour, and we also addressed some of those increased insurance costs that you've heard of from the general government side as well coming year. We did that through meeting guidance and through our strong relationship and our agreement to share the rest that we had discussed. We did, however, in order to meet that guidance, have to take some pretty significant reductions. So we did reduce our budget by nearly $600,000 by looking at realignments to meet our budget guidance. Those were done through a reduction of approximately five positions. We looked at identified savings from central office facilities rental. As you know, last year, we made the move from 800 West Rock, 50 South Washington, so we were able to realize some one-time money there. We saw some salary turnover, some of those reductions, as the city manager was discussing earlier, we took some of those. We had a number of positions that went unfilled for a significant period of time, but that we were able to capture some of that savings for. We, whoops, we also saw some savings in our liability related to retiree healthcare. We saw some savings based on some projected closing of programs, participants leaving our OPEP or our post-employment benefit and the like, and were able to meet that $600,000 through realignment. So we, when you talk about your belt, or when you talk about sort of going on a dot, submit to you that by cutting our budget by nearly, well, more than half a million dollars to make our budget work with guidance was meeting the spirit of, I think, what we were all trying to accomplish in the context of building a new high school. Here, you've seen these pie charts before, but they certainly summarize what our current year's budget looks like. In terms of our revenue, 82.7% of our funding comes from you all in the general government, and the state provides us 13.5% of our revenue, and those together combine for 96%. The rest of that comes through a couple of different sources. On the expenditure side, and this is, I think, really an important component relative to the conversation that sort of came up at the end of the earlier Q and A, is that 85.4% of our total budget is in compensation, it's in people. And when we compensate people at a 1% cost, it's significantly more expensive to do than it is on the general government side. And that's not to suggest that one is better than the other, it just is, it is a significant difference when we talk about compensation. So when you look at our revenue source comparison, and I think this is interesting just in terms of being able to look at it from, and these data come from our Washington area Boards of Education, but it talks about sort of where does money come from. So if you look at, for example, on the left-hand side Alexandria City, Alexandria City's percentage of local revenue is 78.5%, and they get 15.8% from the state. In Arlington County, it's 2% from the local governments and 13% from the state. And then if you scroll over to us, we're slightly higher, Falls Church, from the local percentage compared to the state. And there's one major reason you see in this slide, also in the cost per pupil slide, that our percent is much greater than it is in many other of the surrounding jurisdictions. And the primary driver in that is our class size. We've made a commitment in the Falls Church to maintain a low class size. So we're staffing our classrooms at 22, 24 to 1 versus other surrounding jurisdictions that are staffing their classrooms at 28 and 30 to 1. So when we staff at those kinds of ratios, that instantly drives up the cost per pupil. But it also requires that there's more local cost born because the state amount runs through the local composite index. So there's the standards of quality, the state tells you, here's what you have to have, we're going to give you some money to help pay for that based on the local composite index. But the state does not account for staffing ratios at 22 or 24 to 1. They're, they're staffing at a higher ratio than we are in Arlington, so they're almost the equivalent, but staffing higher. So they may have other resources available to us that we don't have. For example, they may have more school counselors, they may have more, they definitely have more assistant superintendents, maybe a different central office structure. Does that answer your question? I don't think so. Assistant superintendent. So here's the cost per pupil, and this is sort of where that theory holds true as well. In terms of our cost per pupil or expenditures per student, it is $18,644, which is an increase of $100 or 0.5% from the prior year. In its two-year periods from FY '18 to FY '20, our cost per pupil was the lowest in the region. I think that kind of goes back to an earlier conversation, 2.3% as compared to, for example, Loudon, which had the highest increase of the cost per pupil at 11.3%. So we have really been able to maintain a cost per pupil that has been within a range. And I think part of the main driver for us in maintaining that cost per pupil from Loudon this year was that $600,000 reduction that we took in positions across the, across. Some factors that are impacting our projections, and as you may recall, projections, not unlike, I think, where Ms. Bowles gets some of her information is from the Weldon Cooper Center out of the University of Virginia. They do project out 15, 15 years. We're excited that they've got newly geocoded birth data that shows the number of births here in the city of Falls Church. And they also look at our division-wide progression of students over time. The one thing that's really important to note in this projected data is that there's no change in the projections based on local habitat or economy that's factored into these enrollment projections. So as, for example, excuse me, as Founders Row comes online and Athletic Site comes online, those two, for example, are not part of the projections that come from Weldon Cooper. And I think that's important to note as we think about our projections. So we are looking at 21 projections by grade. And here you'll, let me just kind of orient you to this a little bit. The top row is the projections by grade, so if you look at it for kindergarten, we are, we are 168 kindergarten students next year. So if you look at it right below, you'll see minus 12. That means that we are looking at 12 kindergarten, for kindergarteners, than we have this. I'll also share with you that kindergarten is the hardest grade to project because we don't know who's coming to us. We have a number of folks that are in private preschool, we have a number of students that are coming to us from JTP, but at the end of the day, no. So as you may recall last year, in our budget process, part of our cutting of the positions was we cut a kindergarten teacher and we cut a kindergarten para. At the end of the summer, we ended up having to put that kindergarten teacher back and that para back and find money elsewhere to cover that cost. And we were able to do that through a position reserve that we created. But the point of that story is, we just don't know how many kindergartners are going to come. So we are projecting 168, we'll see kind of where we are. First grade, 187, second grade, 173. And you can follow across, the big nuggets here are at the very end, you will see the grand total. We are going to grow by a total of 40 students. So they are projecting us at 2,698 students. And you'll see the major areas of growth here are at George Mason High School, we're growing by 48 students. At Mary Ellen Henderson, we are declining enrollment by 22. TJ, we're growing by nine, and Mount Daniel, growing by one. And those, quite frankly, if you look at them, are primarily because we have progressions of classes. Some classes are larger than others, so as classes progress, the movement of students across is important. The other piece that, if you do the analysis of these data, one of the things you'll see is that a lot of our kids are coming back from us in high school. That might not have been with us for high school, or for middle school or for elementary. And we also are seeing some numbers gaining at our middle schools. So one of the things that you might, that might jump out to you, and I'll just sort of share this as an anomaly, sixth grade, which we are projecting at 100 of share this as an anomaly, sixth grade, which we are projecting at 171, is declining by 65 students. You might say, why? And that's because, remember, that super huge class that's coming through is progressing to seventh grade of 250. So Mary Ellen Henderson's seventh grade class is going to grow by 41 students. So you kind of see how these numbers kind of interplay with each other. The Cooper projection accuracy is always something that comes into question. I won't linger on this too long, but I do want to, in this chart, show the right-hand column, which is the actual versus projected, as a percentage of accuracy. And you'll see that there's a range of probably six, being somewhere in the area of 95.1%, the highest being 102.8. But all of that into account, those numbers are still relatively close. I think one of the greatest anomalies that you saw in actuals versus projected was in 2015, and you might remember that, it was the year that 128 students arrived, so that weren't projected for. That was very painful, I think, for a lot of people. So we're hoping that this year's projection is more accurate. And just by the way, this current year's projection, we actually made a modification in the budget process, and we were able to get the projection to within one student this year. So we're pretty excited about the methodology. So like the general government, we have some salary cost drivers that are important to us as well. So the first is compensation. We are looking at providing a step increase, discuss, we're not looking at providing anything yet, but we are looking at these as drivers. Looking at a step increase for all employees. This is the, this is the commitment that public educational institutions make to their public employees, and that is that there's a stepping grade system that's used across America, it's used across the region. And this is where I think we begin to see some of those cost drivers with respect to general government versus the schools come into play. So for us to provide a one-step increase to our employees, which is around an average of about 3%, costs us about $1.1 million. We also, if we were to look at doing some sort of cost of living adjustment like we did last year, each 1% of a cost of living adjustment would cost, because of the numbers of employees we have, roughly $400,000 for each 1% of salary. Those are some of the salary pieces. The second are benefit drivers. These are interesting and unfortunately, unfortunately interesting, and one of them is new. And the new one is the Virginia retirement system. The rates for the VRS are set by the VRS and are recommended by the actuaries, and they are saying that their rate increases from 16.68% to 17.83%, and that is looking at a mandatory employer expenditure for us at an additional 300. This increase is resulting from the assumed rate of return from 7% to 6.75%. Employee portion will remain at roughly 5%. So what we're showing here is just the employer portion, which is about $300,000. They're also looking at increasing the cost of life insurance through the VRS from 1.31% to 1.34%. That's a fixed driver for us that I don't think we're going to be able to get around. Another fixed driver for us that we're planning for is a roughly 10% increase in both the employer and the employee rate. For health insurance, we do carry the same insurance plan and share with the general government. It's a nice efficiency that we have, a $300,000 increase on the schools portion for that healthcare cost. Some additional needs, this is a, what you'll see on the right-hand side is a Google sheet that we put together and we're able to send out to all of our division directors and all of our principals to take a look at. What we've asked them to do is do an analysis of their program, identify where they may have some additional needs for their programs that go beyond employee compensation and beyond additional costs for VRS and healthcare that are specifically about supporting students. So this is where we begin to get into some program expansion. So here, you'll see under supportive programs for students, you'll see instructional resources to drive student achievement. So for example, we currently have a math specialist that serves all of our schools to support all of our teachers in professional development, to support the math program. We saw incredible gains this year in our math, in all of our subgroups, so all of our students that are in ESOL. Ed kids all made gains due to the incredible work of Chen Fessenden, who's our division-wide specialist in mathematics. We see a general decline in English Language Arts and Reading across the state, and we are not immune to that. It may be 1% a year, but 1% a year over 10 years is not an insignificant number. So one of the things that we are looking at is the potential for an English Language Arts resource teacher or resource specialist, just like our math resource specialists that can work and professionally develop our teachers. Certainly, social emotional learning is something, and support for our kids is something that we're paying very close attention to. So we are looking at additional social workers, school counselors, behavior support, parent liaisons to support our students. And then there's always the rising costs of increased material supplies and services, particularly with the new high school coming online. We know that we're going to have about 100,000 square feet more to clean, and as a consequence of that, we're going to need some new people to clean that brand-new building. So that will be an additional cost that I would anticipate we're going to see. But the really, I think, important component to this sheet that you see on the right-hand side is that we are really tying all requests that the schools are making to our placemat. So you will see that they are tied directly to International Backaloriate for all gaps for caring community and culture. I asked the principals and directors to write a statement about how it connects to that, and then these, those requests ultimately align to our triennial plan, which has been adopted by the school board as well. So one of the things that we're really excited about this year, like we have been in the past, is that we have incredible alignment from top to bottom and bottom to top. So there's a great efficiency with the dollars that we receive. There aren't any wasted movements as we move forward with student achievement. And then the last thing that we have on here that I'll just sort of dovetail into the city managers, but maybe with a little bit more detail because it's got some school board dates in there as well, are our dates for budget development, some of the things that the city manager mentioned are in here, but we have some budget work sessions additionally to that. Our public hearing budget work session and adoption of the school's budget happens on May 5th. So with that, I'm Jared, Mr. Mayor, council members and school board members. I'll wrap up my, what was it to be a brief presentation. Thank you very much, and I certainly welcome any questions if you might have.
Open it up to our city council colleagues. Do you have any questions or comments on the budget presentation?
Any questions, Mr. Snyder?
Sure. Thanks a lot for this presentation. So am I assuming then that you're projecting 40 students more next year than this year? Is that the projection for student growth?
That's correct.
Okay. Secondly, I'd like to focus on slide number seven. So this certainly illustrates the effect of the local composite index, which is established by the state. I'd be interested if you could calculate what our school transfer would be from the general government if we had the LCI of Fairfax County, Loudoun County, and Assis City. I'd be interested in seeing what those numbers are, because my understanding is Loudoun County's average household income is equal to or exceeds or slightly below Falls Church's average household income. And I think, as we looked at this several years ago, the reason why the LCI is so unfairly skewed is because it's rigged based upon real estate costs and not other more reasonable standards. So I guess I'd like to see what the true bite is in connection with that, rather than just percentages, because percentages tend to get lost. And then secondly, do we have anything in our legislative program that asks our elected representatives to at least begin to address the LCI issue?
To your first question, we certainly can add that to our budget questions and sort of work through that and provide that. To your second question, this is a re-benchmarking year at the state. They have done the re-benchmarking with respect to the LCI and, sorry, report, we're up 0.8 again, which means that we do have the highest local composite index of, that's available, 80% of our, 80% of our budget for schools should come from the locality. I think it's also important, sort of to your point, Councilman Snyder, is that, you know, in here you see 82%, and that 82%, or I'm sorry, yeah, 82.7% really speaks to, I think, the value that you all and the school board hold in our schools, in that we exceed what is required in the standards of quality. If we were to, the other interesting question, and I'm not certainly meaning to put a question on the table for us to resolve, but what would the true cost be if we only met the standard of quality? Because I think if we met only what the standards of quality asked for with respect to numbers of social workers, school counselors, psychologists, teachers, and the like, our costs would come down rather significantly. I think it's because you all have such a great commitment to our public schools.
Are there other questions on the city council side?
So, Mr. Mayor, I just had a follow-up with Dr. Mr. Snyder. That's okay. Ms. Litten and I had a pleasure of attending a Virginia School Board Association legislative update this past fall, and they did talk about the LCI. And that's exactly what you're saying is, you know, what the appetite is for lobbying our elected officials and getting that changed. And apparently, that's a longstanding non-starter. But it comes up every year that people talk about it, and yeah, something needs to be done about it, and it's, you know, not equitable, but every year, I guess the legislators kind of throw up their hands and say, not going to touch that one. So certainly, I think that it is something that we should continue to pursue. It is something that I know that the Virginia School Board Association is also aware of, and our lobbyists and our various legislative affairs people are working on it, but unfortunately, it's not something that appears to be anywhere close to being implemented.
Sure. I guess I'm not surprised that others who are benefiting significantly from this want it preserved, but I do think that when you get something like this that has such extreme effects, and those extreme effects become more extreme over the years and less and less based on economic realities, then I think it's time to revisit. Now, will others agree? Perhaps not, but the conversation is not going to start unless we advocate that. It starts, it seems to me, in my opinion. Thanks. Thanks for all the effort. But I do think, regardless of that, it's hopeful for the public to know that a lot of these costs that we're incurring locally, some we volunteer to do, got that, but others are imposed by state formula, which is frankly bizarre.
I'm terrified, since we've kind of crossed this over to legislative, there is always the discussion of looking at the LCI, but until there's a new, larger pie, it will never really change in the General Assembly because somebody's going to win and somebody's going to lose. Regionally, for all of Northern Virginia, what you'll see, I'm proposing for our legislative program is not inconsistent with school needs, is to really look at the cost of competing adjustment, because that impacts Northern Virginia, and so we'd have a bigger impact if that got changed at all. Support positions, so that is something that I'll recommend for your legislative program that we try to push this year, consistent with our delegation, because the LCI is going to be a long time, and I don't see it happening this session.
I think what Ms. Snyder said is absolutely right on, and something that Ms. Litten and I, she's been working really hard with our delegates on too, is that whole notion of the support cap that was put into place during the recession, that really caps the amount of funding that can go to social workers, school psychologists, and the like to support our students. We need that cap lifted, and I think that there is some will this year. I don't think it's a big surprise that we're going to see some things happen, I think, in the legislature this year that we hope will be good for education. Lifting that support cap certainly would be good and could potentially have some positive influence from a legislative perspective.
Have there, Mr. Litten has?
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing kind of the policy asked that you guys put in front of legislative, as it relates to that.
Yeah, we, you have our legislative package, I think, as part of tonight's presentation.
Specific related to LCI?
No, we have not added that to our legislative.
Yeah, I, whatever course you guys have. It's just curious to me, too, when you look at Alexandria, you look at Arlington County, who admittedly carry a lot more weight than we do, with the legislature just given the size of, that proportion state versus local is similar. I understand why it's an LCI, but you would think, especially with the amount of economic development taking place in Alexandria and Arlington, this might be the time to start to put the pressure on our legislatures to revisit that. So again, I'd like to see what asks and kind of what evidence and information has been put in front of them so we can start to pursue that, because it does seem quite often the time to really, so if you guys have anything to do, some of the things you've liked in the Congress, and whatnot, I'd love to see this. And then just my own edification, the increase in students to 128, I feel like I may have asked this last year, what was the reason that there was some kind of influx? And I'm starting to look at these numbers through our audit, the number of increases and calls for service and things like that, and looking at the, this slide where you had, no, not this one, there was another slide where you had an unexpected increase of 128 students. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, outflow of 128 students.
Why was it?
Yeah.
I don't specifically know why. I could perhaps ask my colleagues and get back to you.
I'm just curious to know why I was on this.
Historically, the biggest swings have been in, right, and so sometimes there have been political changes, and so the State Department has brought back a large number of people, where there's been massive swing in the state, and sometimes there's been a flow out. So it depends, it's less from single-family homes and more from the larger apartment complexes, particularly O'Good because of the nature of the housing.
One of those years in Egypt, I think that we had a big outflow or inflow through that, the Arab Spring, three, four years ago.
Just one question, so now that we're on the numbers, so the September 2019 enrollment number was what? How many kids do we have in school right now?
Which slide are you referencing?
I'm not, I was hoping it was on a slide, but I don't think it is, so.
Yeah. Is the, is the actual 2658?
It's 2658, and in your projection for, how many are you going to have in September 2020 is?
Our projection was 2669, so we're off by 11, but that's actually not completely accurate because we did make an adjustment to the projection in kindergarten, and we're more closely aligned to that than the 11 that it shows.
Okay, and so the comparison between September 2018 and 2019, what was the number in September 2018? The actual.
So the actual was 2678?
2678.
2645.
2678, down to 2645.
Up to 2645.
And this September, we were back up 2658. So you're down 20 students over the last two years from 18 to 20. And your projection for September 2021 is?
It's back one slide, we're looking at 2694.
That's the 2694, that includes Jessica Thackeray preschools.
It's 2698, we're going to go up at Thackeray by a few more.
Okay, so you're using the top, the top line, okay. So in terms of percentage, let's say things played out according to your projection, you'd go up from 2658 to 2698. What percentage is that? 40 students out of 2658 is? What percentage is that? Forty students out of twenty-six fifty-eight is how much? Is that the right, is that the right denominator to use?
I suppose it's the right denominator, I.
One and a half percent, okay, thanks.
Now, one of the things that I think I'd like to just make clear, if I can, is those forty, we don't know the nature and the needs of those forty kids. So it could be fifteen ESOL kids, and it could be ten kids in poverty, and it could be twelve special ed kids and eight regular ed kids. And each of those come with very unique needs.
That's why they pay us the big bucks, because you're obviously right, we don't know. That's why they pay you the big bucks too, trying to adjust to those. Because in a small system, you know, a few kids makes a big difference, I understand that.
Absolutely.
Just a quick follow-up question, in terms of needs, does that affect the amount of money that comes from state? These are designated special versus general versus?
There's an at-risk add-on that has been included in, but it also, that money also flows through the LCI. So any money that we would get for the at-risk add-on takes an eighty percent, I think we get a twenty percent.
Who does it, who designates?
It's, it's through, it's formulated through the Virginia Department of Education.
No, I mean, who designates kids as special in university? Is that something done by us? Is it something done by a third party? How is that assessed?
We designate students through a process, whether or not they're special education. We designate students as ESOL students based on their scores on the WIDA assessment. And then students in poverty are looked at through the free and reduced lunch program. So it's a federal guideline, it's transmitted to the state, and then that becomes part of the formula.
And what's the lag on that in terms of assessment, it's a funding year?
A one year.
One year, okay.
Are there other questions on the outside of the table? I think so. Thank you, very, very good presentation. All right. Well, next, at least as far as our agenda goes, is the legislative program. I don't know if there's more discussion, I know it's an item in a moment, the budget guidance resolution, but our next item is actually the legislative program, which we talked briefly about a minute ago. I don't know if you guys, Chair Gill, if you want to talk about that now, the legislative program, for what you all want or propose?
I would actually turn that over to Ms. Litten, she is our legislative liaison and is doing a great job with it, so she can update it.
And while we're setting that up, I just want to note that council's legislative program includes the school board's draft legislative program, starting on line ninety-eight.
So I won't spend a lot of time because I'm sure you guys can read through what we have. And we did get a chance to touch on a couple of our key items, but just briefly, we have a section on funding, and as always, I think you guys just heard some of our challenge, we still get a lot of state funding. So I think our message often with funding is tied to mandates. As you know, we get many mandates in education from the state. So obviously, we don't want mandates without the funding. So that's sort of always our big picture message. Couple of things that Peter pointed out is lifting the cap on support personnel. That's going to be a big issue this year that I think there's a lot of support for in, in, from districts around the Commonwealth.
Could you explain, I don't, I'm not sure I understand what you're referring to.
Okay, maybe I'll turn to Peter, yeah.
Just briefly, I'm just curious.
Yeah, it was sort of that, that support cap conversation we were having earlier, that was part of the, when the recession hit, the state made a decision to cap the amount of funding that would flow to school divisions for support personnel. And so what we're asking for is to try to regain some position where the state provides at least pre-recession funding to school divisions. And part of the way they can get to pre-recession funding is by lifting that support cap that they instituted during the recession, meaning that they would allow dollars to flow to fully support the standards of quality with respect to positions that support students, school counselors, school psychologists, school social workers. And so we're really trying to advocate strongly that that support cap be lifted.
Subject to the LCI, or is that not subject to the LCI?
Yes, it is subject to the LCI.
Thank you.
Sorry, one question. The calculation goes into LCI, is there any consideration to the, or I could say, the amount of tax revenue that goes to the state per capita for each state?
No, it's based on real, true, real, real prop, real value of property. Actually, I won't say it at the table because I won't get it right, but if you'd like, I'm sure we could.
That's right, I got coffee with Greg tomorrow morning, so it'll be in the agenda. I'll stop asking questions about LCI, and I'll get a full download from Greg. I expect you to have the entire composite of that formula ready to be discussed in detail.
The other thing under funding, one other thing I would point out that is new this year that we're adding, that I think maybe would be great to also have you guys mention, is opposing an increase in VRS rates and supporting use of any state surplus for the VRS. Because we're seeing that as potentially a big hit on our budget, we're going to advocate with our members on that issue. Then our other issues I think are pretty education-specific, having to do with assessments, health advisory board. There, there's one new issue this year that has to do with reporting of misdemeanors that has been somewhat controversial with all the districts. But the BSBA did support this issue, and it just has to do with what we have to report when there's an incident in our schools, whether or not we have to report that to the police. So we're advocating that we're not required to report every incident. If you guys have questions, Peter can answer a little bit more about how that currently works. And.
I could, I could do that real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Currently, there is a misdemeanor charge for disruptive, disruption of disruptive behavior in a school that not in our school systems, but other school systems across the Commonwealth that is used as a discipline procedure. So if a student is being disruptive rather than dealing with it as a school and as a student issue, the principal or a teacher might call the school resource officer and ask for the student to be arrested for a misdemeanor. So we're, we're trying to eliminate disruptive behavior as a misdemeanor so that schools can deal with disruptive behavior appropriately. That doesn't mean that if, if a student is destroying property, that they couldn't be arrested for destruction of property, or if an adult was being disruptive, that that person couldn't be arrested for being disruptive. It just means that it couldn't be used as a tool in the toolkit for discipline of students, which it, which it is in some, some cases around the Commonwealth.
Then just one last thing I want to mention is that we did not, we have not included at this point anything in our agenda related to gun safety. And I think we were interested in that, and I think maybe you guys have some of that in your agenda. Just when we were working on it, we were a little uncertain. Our lobbyist who works for us didn't really know exactly what issues were becoming forward. We're kind of waiting to see what happened with the election. So we're looking forward to hearing what you guys are including, and maybe continue some of that.
In addition to that, one of the things we discovered in our research when Shannon and I, Ms. Litten and I were doing it, was that the Gun Free Schools Act is actually federal legislation, which we don't have any impact or influence over.
Thank you. I had a question that might be an agenda item for us, is around the solar freedom bill. So last year it was kind of an omnibus, omnibus bill, it kind of included all things in there. Is, are there specific things that impact the new high school from being fully net zero? Is it specifically the solar cap? So I think the lesson learned in talking to Delegate Keem, who I think sponsored this bill, is that because there was everything and the kitchen sink in the solar freedom bill, it all failed. So this year I think he's going to try parsing it out and recommending specific items. So if there's ones that are of particular importance to us, i.e. the removing the cap, or other ones, we should probably pull that out and call it out specifically, especially if that bill does get parsed out. Is it just the cap or there?
The primary driver for us is the cap and being able to generate more megawatts. When it's looked at as a region with more and more people coming into the solar, solar age, you know, as we put our high school, bring our high school online, we could end up being limited in how much generation we can have based on what else is around us. So if we can uncap that or, or increase the cap, I think it was five megawatts roughly, that would be really helpful to us to get closer to net zero.
So Cindy, if that's not.
Very helpful with other localities bringing up big schools and eating up the entire.
Yeah, we heard that Fairfax County is awarding their PPA soon, so we'll get to that, five megawatt.
Well, the. That's an interesting conversation in and of itself, considering how much money there is. But I do think one of the nice things about Fairfax County's completion of their PPA and their award is it's going to be rideable, and we actually have a PPA pre-meeting in a week so that we can be prepared to jump on to that PPA if necessary to perhaps even get ahead of some of the schools that are in the queue so that we can award the PPA. Because one of the nice things about having the full bond funds is it allows us to do a lot of the work. And the PPA work is, is costly for us.
So I would concur that the solar freedom bill needs to be in council's legislative program. And I know I sent the information to the superintendent so that we can include it just sort of by process. Historically, my recommendation will be when I bring the legislative program to you next week for action, council will adopt and endorse by reference the school board's legislative program. It's the same thing we will do with the electoral board, the YPO, the SD, and the C. So anything in either body will be in councils, which gives me the ability to speak to it in the council. I highly recommend that the positions stay pretty broad. So like, we might reference the cap, but we don't get down to any fine level details because you never know what the bills are going to do. This should be a broad statement, and we work it as the bills unfold, so that hopefully we can have no cap. And if so, we can. And then, of course, your environmental sustainability council wants the cap, what across solar freedom too. So broad, cover the intent, so we have flexibility myself, otherwise, and related electives to work there. And Mayor, just a few other highlights for the legislative program. What I provided tonight was just a briefing of some new issues for consideration. Part of it clearly aligning with the school board because we'll be doing issues here tonight. But the legislative program that will come for you next week, by far, I'll recommend a lot of the same positions because it hasn't changed. So gun prohibiting will be in there, those are going to be a lot of bills. Once again, the core intent, not to build specific, but definitely we want to go back to no guns in public facilities, parks. We want to look at smoking, we want to look at pedestrian safety, MBTA funding, we want a lot of funding. So all of those same positions, and you have a hard copy of last year's program for you. Some of the new things that I would add is that we'll go for the support positions, we'll go for the cost of living. Did you have something before I go into new positions?
Were you going to mention smoking? You mentioned smoking, and one of the positions we are taking is asking that vaping be taxed at the same rate as smoking. And that that additional tax go to schools.
One of the nice things I think is this year, we have a strong regional school legislative programs, but also our local government, strong regional positions. So all of these positions are all speaking the same language. Smoking banned, but also changing the tax rate for the cigarette taxes, preserving trees, as you heard from the Urban Forestry Commission, scooters, we want to have them do a study, so we can do lessons learned and not just continue to mandate and maximize certain rate and state control. Peer-to-peer vehicle rentals is a new issue out there where folks are actually renting out their own personal vehicles when they're not in use and they're not being taxed as the same as a front-of-vehicle, for example. There's also no regulations in safety, so it's a new sharing of the company. Study it and make sure we can have safety, just like with scooters. Board of Social Services composition is one I wanted to particularly call out. This would be one done with the partnership with Fairfax Cities, since we're part of the Fairfax Falls Church Social Services Board. Right now, the way the state code is set up, the cities, while we're paying for and benefiting from the service, don't have a seat on the board. So state code would recommend that each city would have a seat. So those are just some of the new positions that would be recommended to include in addition to the very important standard ones. Also at the table, I provided you a one-pager with the legislative focus for our delegation. Both Senator Sasselaw and Delegate Simon provided me from their office some of their key focus now that there's a change in majority in Richmond. So you'll see for Senator Sasselaw, he's phrasing it as welcoming Virginia, that's a good place to do business, sustainable living and raise a family. So his focus, gun violence, public education, workforce development, issues in women's health is sort of the key themes. There'll be a lot of bills behind it. And for Delegate Simon, he's focusing on campaign finance, election reform, student loan debt, fair housing and transgender equality, criminal justice reform, and gun violence prevention. So those is a lot of council's path positions are consistent with the application. And of course, we have the benefit of Richard Sasselaw now being. Leader Sasselaw now. I will note that December ninth is Northern Virginia Transportation Commission's Legislative Day with Senator Valentine, and that's an important networking opportunity for transportation funding. Ross will be able to join, he's going to check calendars. We have Sasselaw's and Simon's annual town hall meeting, is, dates been confirmed for January eighteenth, ten to noon? And they've just provided me the flyer so we can do messaging, which is being held at the New York High School cafeteria again this year. And then February sixth is VML Legislative Day, and the city clerk will be giving you information if you haven't already gotten it to see who wants to register and join the enrichment of the VML. So the formal program will be. I'd love any other additional comments or questions as we build.
Thank you, Cindy. So I won't mention the perennial stuff that you've covered. A few things that we've talked about in the past, so on scooters and actually all bicycling, a helmet requirement. So I know that we can't require helmets above the age of sixteen. Do you think there's any appetite to actually change that?
I know there's appetite and desire, but whether.
I'd like to see it, we've talked about it, that would be one of, one. In light of all the traffic calming discussions we've had, speed cameras, so I know we have red light cameras and school bus arm cameras. Speed cameras is another kind of controversial, but I certainly would like to see them.
You guys be more optimistic on helmets or speed cameras?
While I'm on a roll, I think we saw single-use plastics, or at least local authority to manage single-use plastics in there.
The plastic bags, yeah.
And then the last one which came up at the doors for me was around 5G. So I know that was a big VML topic last year. Where are we with the rollout of 5G across the state and how much local authority we have on that?
I'd have to double-check with VML on the latest, but there was a lot of work with 5G and studies and trying to negotiate a better.
I know the concern local, yeah.
They can roll it out and, you know, some control, but limited control in terms of the maximum confines where they can go.
They just can put the antennas anywhere, is that where we?
Yeah, they have to get a permit, or we have to issue it for them. And it's like two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars for the use of the city's public right of way, which I think is a problem. It's a, it's a constitutionality. It's not constitutional to take that place.
We were not successful last session. I don't know what build... Off-legislation discussion.
There was an update from the VML about, either in the magazine or in their most recent newsletter, about 5G.
It was a very high-level summary.
Yeah.
Are there other comments? Vice Mayor Conlon?
So Mr. on the Falls Church Electoral Board legislative goals, there's one. Number five on line 454, where they're advocating to move the June primary to the third Tuesday of June, so more schools will be closed because holding elections in schools is problematic for schools. But I have to disagree with that because I think it's... You're less likely to have families there to vote. So it's sort of... People will be in different routines, so it seems like that might be suppressing the electorate. So I would disagree with that one. What our policy is on adding these or taking these out.
Yes, I would defer to council how you want to take it out or handle that. I think their point would be is they're also advocating for more in-person against voting and so that you don't have to physically go to the polls as often. So I think they see it doesn't have a negative impact on voter turnout. It just makes it a whole lot easier to hold elections in a school facility when school buses and kids aren't part of the mess. I don't see it, I don't think they see it as a... Or we are an opt-in vote.
Are there other... Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot. First, a question for the schools. I think there was a Governor's Commission on School Safety that had a series of recommendations last year. One of them concerned the number of high school counselors. So my question is, have you scanned that report? And in your legislative package, have you requested the legislative amounts in order to provide, in order to assist the city of Falls Church in meeting those recommendations?
Thank you, Mr. Snyder, Councilman Snyder. We have scanned that report, and by lifting that support cap that's been in place since 2015 would help us meet the recommendations of that school safety audit with respect to...
Okay, great. Thanks for that. And on the city's side, I'd like to follow up on council member parties. Speed cameras, yes. Red light running cameras, the current legislation is extremely restrictive. I think that when it's the number we can put in requires incredible amount of engineering. It basically says you can do it, but you really can't. So I think that's something I'd like to see addressed. Also, the process we have to go through in order to lower speed limits on city streets. I wonder if we could have something there after we do a quick staff analysis. I think, again, there's a huge amount of engineering that would be done that would be cost prohibitive. And I frankly would like to see something on the LCI. So thanks a lot.
All right. Are there any other comments, at least from council, on the legislative package? Do you guys have anything else on that? Okay. Well, our next item on the agenda is back to budget guidance. I don't know if there's more discussion to be had. I know we've had a fairly thorough discussion on that. Mr. Shields, did you have anything as far as the actual resolution itself? Is it the same one we used from last year essentially? Is that correct?
And yes, it is. And it was listed last on the agenda because typically the council likes to really discuss on what the council's priorities are in terms of things we discussed earlier, neighborhood traffic calming and walkability and things like that. And so possibly all of our colleagues would want to participate in that discussion. That's why it's last. But I will just note by way of introduction, traditionally, what the budget guidance that is of interest to everybody is the way that the phrasing is done. Last year's was in Bullet 1 about cost-effective delivery of services, including consolidating services with schools where possible. And Bullet 2, the point here being maintaining discipline on operating budgets to create financial capacity for the major capital projects, including the High School, Henry Riley Sons Library, and the City Hall Project. And then the third, the way it was phrased last year is that the operating budget should not exceed organic revenue growth, not require an increase in real estate tax rate. And then from there, they are typically points that are kind of focused on general government operations, where those top three are ones that the school board and the city council have discussed together in the past, although this is the city council's budget guidance. So I'll start with those, just a discussion of those. The Bullets 4 through 12, just really quickly, address compliance with financial policies. Bullet 5, calling for multi-year revenue and expenditure projections. Bullet 6, addressing competitive employee compensation. Bullet 7, addressing vibrant, attractive, and walkable business districts and options for funding neighborhood traffic calming program on a sustained basis. Bullet 8 stands for integrity with the past adopted CIPs. Bullet 9, making effective use of regional dollars for transportation. Bullet 10, holding WADA to the 3% cap on operating budget growth. 11, making sure that we don't lose track of the pension investment and how that helps fund the capital program with 1.5 cents in the tax rate. And then Bullet 12, public information about the budget. So that's how it's been addressed in the past. I think the intent tonight is to get council's input on key things you want to see in the guidance document. Can you see it on the...
All right. Thank you very much. Any comments, thoughts from council? This is predominantly council. Matt, or we certainly have your input, though, if you'd like.
So the line where we talk about the projected at 2%, what's the projection in FY 2020?
So per the presentation earlier tonight, 3.1% is the current projections over FY 2020.
Okay, I don't see any reason why that shouldn't be in there. I think we're... Second issue I'd like to add is a specific reference to stormwater infrastructure. I see that as an emerging issue that I think we need to pay attention to. And it can be in the same language that we do with the traffic calming. But I think both demand, focus, and funding. And then we're certainly leaving open the opportunity to provide more with schools, right? There's nothing that precludes that. Thank you.
I don't know what bullet number it is, but it's the one about traffic calming and vibrant, attractive, that one. Awardsmithing, but I think the nuance is important. So options for funding neighborhood traffic program on a sustained basis. I'd like to see it as options for delivering a neighborhood traffic program on a sustained basis because I think we've been funding it for three years now. I think we'd like to see more throughput. And whether we do it through the budget amendment where we clean out all the projects in queue or whether we do it on an ongoing basis, I think that's something that we need to be more responsive to citizen requests. And then as part of that, I'd like to see the sidewalk program that I've asked. Maybe the third time's the charm. Kind of a dedicated sidewalk program.
Other comments?
Yes, Cherokee?
Just one note from the school side. Based on, I know there's the 3.1% growth that Mr. Snyder has asked for in there. Just a reminder that the superintendent is legally bound to provide a needs-based budget to us in the first pass. So when it comes in, it will be higher than 3.1% probably. But just so that it's not a surprise, that is a legal requirement that his initial action to us be a needs-based budget, and then we go...
We're expecting...
Verification.
We're expecting a 3.2% budget spurs cut.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Lickens?
Yeah. Further to Ms. Hardy's comments, I'm just going to talk about not just funding, but delivering. I would expand that bullet point. That is number seven. Budget should provide options for funding and delivering improvements for the progress in making the city's business districts. And I would like to add the word "successful." Want to make investments, to invest in the businesses themselves, which drive the revenue that we're talking about here.
Okay, other, Mr. Duncan?
Where's affordable housing? I prefer putting affordable housing in that list. You know, the plan was to try to begin to put some money aside for the Fields project, I thought. It's coming pretty soon, right now. And so there's no time like the present. And also, however it's phrased here, but some language that reflects what the manager said about not only, you know, designating positions, but actually hiring people in them who are compensated competitively and on the general government side and compensating existing sensitive positions. If that's already in there, that's good. I don't seem to have gotten the budget guidance statement in my particular packet.
Oh. Roger.
Other comments from anyone? All right. So I think this has been a great meeting, and maybe the last time we get together, at least formally, in a meeting like this with at least a few of our colleagues. So thanks again for the great work you've done on behalf of our community these past years. It's a pleasure working with both of you in particular, and we look forward to further civic involvement.
Yes, thanks for hosting us tonight and for four great years of work together and really amazing accomplishments on behalf of the city. So everyone should be very proud.
All right. Thanks very much. All right, so we on council may have...
One more thing. I was asked by Ms. Hiscott today to note that these t-shirts were funded by the Falls Church Education Foundation. Steve and Nancy Sprague Teacher Leadership Fund grant. So thank you, Education Foundation.
All right, so we on council maybe have just one more item. It could be very short about scheduling and council comments. Oh, we do have a closed session. Okay. All right, so let's do, let's do counseling or scheduling and council requests. Maybe take a five-minute break and go to closed session. All right, so are there any council schedule requests, council comments? There is a Northern Virginia Regional Commission meeting on Thursday, which is the holiday party from 6:30 to 7:30 before the actual meeting occurs. So if anybody wants to attend that and meet some of their colleagues, Thursday at 6:30, yeah. This Thursday. Okay. All right, anyone who is not on a plane, on a train, at appointments, we do have a meeting, and the first part of it is a holiday party for elected folks, particularly people leaving government. This Thursday at 6:30. All right, what else do we have as far as comments, schedule, anything like that?
There's also an NVTA holiday event.
12th, I think.
12th in the evening, right?
And then the cog is at 11:00. You got it, man.
Reliable sources say that the News Press Holiday Party is also at December 12th, Thursday. Yes. There is a town hall at 7 o'clock. The News Press event starts at 5:30.
So town hall or holiday party? How's it going to come?
You can do both.
Mr. Shields, the staff, the staff holiday, your employee holiday party is...
It's on Thursday, right?
The 12th also?
The 12th.
The 12th? Two.
That's in noon.
12th to 2.
And you all saw the Community Services Board open house for Wednesday? And there's Aurora House...
I'll tell, that was on my list.
Okay, sorry.
Next Tuesday, the 10th. I get to say it. I'm the liaison to that one for six years now. The Aurora House Advisory Committee has put together a really nice happy hour fundraiser for the Olem Porzelle Scholarship Fund for girls who have graduated from Aurora House. And it is Tuesday the 10th, and it's at Falls Church Distillery. There's a $10 ticket to get in, and then they're raising money at the event. And they're hoping to raise money to replenish the funds in that scholarship which have shrunk. So this is the first time I've done that in a really long time. All right, that's different. So the open house is run by the staff. This is the advisory committee that is putting this together to help fund the scholarships. So that's Tuesday the 10th.
Do we have to notice any of these functions now that we're heading into function season?
That's correct. Where there's, where no part is of the business or no part of the purpose of the meeting or the discussion is to discuss or transact public business, it's exempt from the meeting. Treat it as not being a meeting, even if more than two of you are there.
But if, for instance, you know, we went to the Aurora House open house, presumably we're there in some capacity as inspectors of...
But you're not going there for the purpose of transacting public council business. It's a, it's a social event. And so the General Assembly has created an exception for those types of things so that you can attend without having to advertise every social event.
So it should be really, it's to our advantage for these things to be described as social events, even though it sounds like we're spending the whole month just socializing around town. It's, there's a legal reason for that. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So sorry to break the discussion of social events, but to talk about a policy issue. This Thursday at the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, there's a proposal to allow the state to dip into the inside the Beltway I-66 funding in order to help fund the Long Bridge. Long Bridge is the bridge connecting Alexandria to Washington, D.C., which is the northeast corridor. It's a $3.6 billion project. They're looking for funding wherever they can get it. They're going to apply for federal funding and new state funding. They're also looking for existing funding. Question is, should we agree to allowing them to take some of the I-66 inside the Beltway money that otherwise we would qualify for for use on the Long Bridge project? When this came up at the last meeting, I objected to it. I said you could argue that it might be equivalent or appropriate for the additional Atomic River crossing for Metro, which apparently now is off the table. But the Long Bridge is a huge project. They're looking for money. What they did agree to is to maintain basically the current amount, which is about $17 million to $19 million a year. But there would, the state would grab any increases for use on the Long Bridge project. Question, how do you want me to vote? Keep in mind that if we vote no, there may be ramifications in terms of other projects that we're interested in, for example, the Route 7 bus rapid transit. So if anyone feels strongly tonight or later on, we should vote yes, we should vote no, let me know.
I wouldn't know if anyone was calling, so I'm not necessarily... This is potentially...
Why don't you scatter that? I mean, you could talk to the local delegation folks, right? Get a feeling of, there's going to be payback if we do one thing.
There, in my view, there will be some kind of payback. We don't know what it'll be. We know that virtually every other local jurisdiction that we deal with has an interest in VRE. We don't, frankly, except to the extent that it takes some minor traffic off 66. But I don't expect Arlington, Alexandria, Fairfax County, Loudoun County, interestingly enough, is raising the same issues we are. But generally, our allies are going to be on the other side of this issue because VRE is very important to them.
Just before the holidays, I learned that Nick Donahue had some additional changes to the agreement and had vetted with this. So you're going to get a briefing, but you...
and had been vetted with this, so you're going to get a briefing, but you won't have to do immediate vote. They're going to delay it until January because the staff didn't have time to look at it. So we need to keep working. At least we have a little bit of time to see the ramifications.
So it's less urgent than I was expecting right now.
Yeah, I learned just before the holidays from.
But the council's thoughts on this would be very much appreciated. And I'm free to talk one-on-one if you have a background.
I would encourage us thinking about what's the value for the city either now or future of crossing as more than.
All right, anything else or should we go to closed session?
Ms. Hardy and I had discussed something earlier today, and I just wanted to make you aware of it. In working on the scooters ordinance, and as you know, we've discussed what's going to be a compromise for riding on sidewalks. I wanted to let you know that we found within our existing ordinance a provision that says the use of off-street bikeways or sidewalks by any person other than bicycles is unlawful. So what that does is that means we currently have a prohibition that would apply to scooters using sidewalks. As we move forward, if we decide to adopt the principle or the idea that we discussed last time, which is prohibiting scooters on sidewalks except on 7 and 29, I think we could simply adjust some language here and we could adopt that at second reading. However, if council decides to be more lenient in terms of allowing scooters to ride on more sidewalks than just 7 and 29, we would probably have to do a new first reading for such an ordinance. I don't think that that is going to pose any problem with respect to the January 1st deadline because you've already adopted the program. And that's what you had to adopt before January 1st to avoid scooter companies being allowed to just put their scooters out in the city. But I just wanted to give you that very brief update of that's where we stand right now. We're going to continue to discuss what will be a compromise solution on how we allow scooters to be, what sidewalks they can ride on. And in the event we need a new ordinance or a new first reading, we can do that and do the adoption in January. And that should not affect our program, which we've already adopted.
All right.
So may I, not to prolong the discussion, but so right now, if we did nothing, current law bans the riding of scooter devices rental only or all scooters on.
All scooters. It's the use of any sidewalk by any vehicles other than bicycles. And bicycles, there's a definition in the ordinance.
Are described.
It is non-motorized bicycles.
Okay, so not to act at all.
At all would mean that we would have the prohibition that exists today. And if we need more time to find out exactly which streets or which sidewalks we would want to allow people to ride on, we can take a little more time and adopt an ordinance early next year. That would do that.
So as a practical matter, the policy that we passed would be the one that would be sent out to the vendors. And the vendors would make a decision on whether to participate in Falls Church or not with the understanding at that time that scooters would not be allowed on sidewalks.
That's correct. Now, you could, we will have next week the ordinance that was already discussed, which is allowing them on 7 and 29 sidewalks. That could be adopted next week.
At least, at least for me, that was adopted without the understanding that, that, you know, the language that you just described was.
Correct. We, we had inserted it because this provision is in a section called bicycle paths. And we put it in the prohibitions, but it exists there now. And we could simply create the exceptions that we've already advertised. Or we can wait if we want to create more exceptions to be more of a compromise.
Okay, well, I'm sure this would be of broad interest to certain people or intense interest to a certain number of people. So let's just say that that scenario played out, that we did not do anything. We did not change the current ban. And we went to market with the policy that we've enacted. And we got no takers. We got no vendors. Would we then be able to make adjustments to the current ban on scooters on sidewalks in, you know, late winter in hopes of attracting interest by vendors who had shunned us because we currently banned their devices?
I, I think you would. You have a program that's in place that you set out. It's outlined in the documents that have already been adopted. And if you decide to change the ordinance in terms of where, when scooters can be ridden on sidewalks, then someone might want to come forward under existing.
Okay, thank you.
I think I know the answer to this question, but since we have that on the books already, do we have any incidents of, or instances of that ban being enforced with scooters already?
I'm not aware of any. I don't know.
All right. Anything else before we go to closed session? All right, so let me go ahead and read the motion. That's hopefully inside here to take us into closed session. Then why don't we take a five-minute break? Are we going to do it in here? Okay. Okay. Upon a motion made by council member. And seconded by council member.
Connolly.
And passed by a vote of city council, council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-37118, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such council. Status of negotiations with hidden contracting on the city hall project. Council McConley?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Zee? It's not here. Tartar? Yep. All right, let's go to the O'Kren. All right, we're back on camera, coming out of closed session. And upon a motion made by council member.
Connolly.
And seconded by council member.
Hardy.
And passed by a vote of city council, council reconvening in open session. Council member Connolly.
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Snyder?
Yep.
And Zee is absent. And it is, what time is it? 11:11, okay. This is our certification. Upon a motion made by council member.
Duncan.
And we got Hardy. And seconded by council member.
Duncan.
And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session. It was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion about which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the body. Council member Connolly.
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Tartar? Yep. Zee is absent. All right. Is there anything else to talk about tonight? All right, let's do it. Good day.